You can't. Now you can hear me. Good afternoon again. I was saying something very profound and meaningful, but you couldn't hear me. Welcome to this special meeting of the Tompkins County Legislature Tuesday, March 30th, 2021. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, everybody in justice, for all.
Thank you. Roll call of members.
Mike Lane.
Here.
Dave McKenna.
Here.
Glenn Moore.
Here.
Martha Robertson.
Here.
Mike Sigler.
Here.
Shawna Black.
Here.
Amanda Champion.
Here.
Deborah Dawson.
Here.
Henry Granison.
Here.
John.
Here.
Dan Klein.
Here.
Ann Corman.
Present.
Lesley McLean-Clayborne.
Present.
Fourteen members present.
Thank you.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, sorry.
Almost.
Close.
Wishful thinking, but we're there. Thank you very much. This meeting is specifically to deal with the resolution stating Tompkins County's reimagining public safety plan, a plan that we're supposed to submit, a resolution that we've seen and worked through and accepted the plan to be submitted according to Executive Order 203 to the Governor's Office by April 1st. There are, this is the last opportunity for our community to share their thoughts with us. And I have a number of people who are here who asked to speak with us on the privilege of the floor for the public, which we are going to entertain, beginning with Reggie Teasley.
Thank you. My name is Reggie Teasley. I have lived in Ithaca for over 35 years. I hope you're very young. I have a PhD in sociology and have taught courses in sociology, criminology, and criminal justice for 30 years. I've taught in prison and I've served on the Ithaca Community Police Board. I well versed in the sociology of work and professions as well as US labor history and the changing class structure. I did not participate in developing this proposal because I am familiar with the history of police reform projects and their outcomes, consistent failure. These projects are ineffective at best and counterproductive at worst. They may appear to create change while preserving the status quo. However, I am speaking up now because I find this proposal to be serious substantive and potentially workable. It aims to create organizational restructuring in the context of systemic change. And as such, it recognizes the need for course correction based on research. We must ask, who do the police serve and protect? This is not a proposal for reform, and that is what is useful about it. We don't need a meat cleaver approach, but we do need restructure. And we should not be surprised to face a vigorous defense of the status quo. And the proposal must respond to that effectively. Let me highlight this. There is no reason we should keep a military-based policing system invented in England in the 1800s and designed to control burgeoning cities filled with the poor and new working classes. We're in a changed society. We need a changed policing system. I just want to focus on a couple of factors here. The review board. Unless these boards are independent from the law enforcement agency and have actual investigative powers, they are simply window dressing. Occupations and professions like to self-regulate. Unfortunately, the model is inherently flawed for all the obvious reasons. Policing agencies have additional barriers to effective self-regulation in that they operate in a society that is increasingly unequal and has a 300-year history of slavery linked to a contrived race system followed by another 100-plus years of the disenfranchisement and abuse of African-Americans and other minority populations, such as Mexican-Americans. Law enforcement officers have the authority to use lethal force in prescribed situations and they tend to be hierarchical, militaristic, white, and male. Not surprisingly, their internal reviews across the nation repeatedly find in favor of the officer. What would a reasonable officer do? What would a white male working or middle-class regard as reasonable behavior under the circumstances? We see that it took a summer of protests and sobriety to finally bring a police officer to trial for the nine-plus-minute filmed killing of an unarmed African-American man in Minneapolis. This indicates the utter failure of the system. I served on the Ithaca Police Board, which I learned from experience was simply window dressing. We had no independence and no power either to investigate sanction or follow up on recommendations for changes in procedure. We could not even identify the officers who made the most errors or caused the most problems. Every situation was regarded as unique. Personal personnel matters are confidential. The end. And so forth. Police culture. Decades of research attest to the deeply rooted police culture. They aren't the only occupation with the culture, but it's particularly important because it serves to perpetuate the beliefs about their role in the community, the thin blue line. We stand between law-abiding residents and the criminal element. And you look at FBI data and crime victims' data would quickly deny this viewpoint as, in fact, it's all quite mixed and complicated. There is no simple law-abiding versus non-law-abiding population. And also it results from and perpetuates their insularity. No one understands us. It's a different kind of an occupation, but one of the things it produces is group loyalty. We have each other's backs. And the unwillingness to reveal another officer's misbehavior and to testify to same. This is called the blue curtain. It's a curtain of secrecy.
Reggie, can you please?
Sadly, sadly, the PVA often is awash in police culture. I would simply say, you will notice there's no movement to defund the fire department. I think this proposal has merit, and I hope it can be approved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Reggie. For others, I failed to, before Reggie starts speaking, say that legislation generally with assigned three minutes you all should have gotten the rules for speaking on purpose of the floor for the legislature. And so we do ask you to self-monitor as best as you can because we don't have the timer going with the big noise that cuts you off at that time. But we do want to hear from you, and your comments are important. All right. Thanks again, Reggie. And following Reggie is Tom Corey. Yes, if you can, Dan.
Corman.
Yeah, just give Reggie back. Yeah, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I have the mute button. Yes. Good evening, Madam Chairman, legislators. I'm Tom Corey, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you on the matter of my opposition to the county's adoption of the reimagining public safety report. I've been a Dryden resident for 45 years in the 14th Legislative District. I'm a homeowner in the Village of Dryden, and I've served on the village board and over the years on several county advisory boards and task force. Until my retirement, I was a small business owner in the insurance business and appreciate the need for adequate public safety. Living in rural Tompkins County, my views and those of my neighbors, which I've discussed this with, may differ from some of yours, but I think that we can all agree that we should all expect competent, caring, and equitable law enforcement from our law enforcement agencies. I have read the reports and their addendums, so please allow me to express my deep disappointment in the quality and intellectual honesty of the document. This is a report that was rushed into print by an arbitrary deadline imposed by the governor with threats of defunding our necessary public safety agencies. It's kind of an embarrassment of the public trust. A document with this level of importance that stands to permanently change the relationship between governments and the way we provide for the public welfare should be allowed to circulate throughout the county with hearings in each town, should be allowed to mature in the public discourse and arise fully vetted by the people it will affect, not just one brief session online and that poorly attended. The public facilitators of this project, the Institute for Policing Equity, provided in their statement a guarantee for the accountability of the adequacy of the report, and I don't find it adequate. The process of determining the impact of policing on a community began with a survey that by their own statements was poorly responded to and to which the author stated was flawed and inadequate. The process continued with focus groups that because of COVID or whatever other reason had poor participation. So poor that out of 168 community participants, only 29 actually completed the demographic information. And the authors were suspicious that many of the responses came in from the same people, duplications. They agreed that the FOSIC groups of the impacted community were statistically invalid. In a world where we follow science, this report does not. The police agency groups were actually well-attended and seemed focused on improving their job performance. So as a county, are we going to change the effect of $25 million worth of expenditures between these two agencies, the city and the county, on the statements of less than 50 individuals? I think that's a poor idea. The idea of a joint report is also flawed. The county and the city have much different demographics and much different needs. And of course, the police agencies are different. The county sheriff is an elected public official, and the police chief is an employee of the city. The budget funding is different, and we've also left out the largest of all the county police agencies. Cornell University is not even mentioned in this agency, in this report. Now, I don't really have time to get into the whole problems of the deeply flawed beliefs in this report, some of which are perfectly valid. But let me say this. I think all of us know that there have been, and we have seen the videos of police operations that were horrible, that left us traumatized. But I've also seen videos of police running into the World Trade Centers on 9/11 where I lost friends. So not every police agency is the same, and I believe, having dealt with the agencies here in Tompkins County, that there is no inherent racism within the agencies. Everyone can improve, but I think that this project is flawed in its basic concept. So I don't want to go into details. I'm just going to, I have two points. That's all. One, please, I would like to ask that if you're going, if you must tonight adopt a plan, please separate the proposals for the county from those proposals for the city and separate and send it in separately. And number two, I, as a county taxpayer, would like to hear from each legislator their opinion of the report, not just a vote. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. All right. Next on the list is David West.
Thank you for having me. I'm here today to urge you to support the implementation of the reimagining public safety police reform package. The culture in many of our police and sheriff departments is in desperate need of a reset, and we're not at all exempt from this in Ithaca and Tompkins County. The culture that's developed through the veneration of the SWAT team and through the police benevolent associations, us against them mindset, is shocking to many in our community. There's a national trend of police seeing themselves through the cult of the thin blue line, where police are outsiders who must stand against not only criminals, but also the communities where they work, who could not possibly understand and will always be ungrateful in odds with the police. I see this reflected in the rhetoric of the Ithaca Police Benevolent Association and in conversations with our local officers. And it flows from a lack of leadership at the top, working against the tide of misinformation that drives these national trends in police communities, in police social media, and it needs to be fixed. While some have called the proposed reform package radical, it seems to me to be a very mild first step in addressing the problems with policing that we as a community have direct control over. We must take bold steps to set a new tone and build a new culture among the officers that we employ with our tax dollars. It's shocking that in a progressive place like Tompkins County, we're still doing no-knock warrant serving for drug offenses. It puts officers at risk. It puts community members at risk. And it's a symptom of a culture that focuses first and foremost on exerting power and overwhelming force in every situation. We have to acknowledge and hear that that force is exerted in a way that has dramatically unequal outcomes, especially for the poor and communities of color. We need civilian leadership in charge of rebooting the culture of policing and public safety, and we need the proposed rebranding of the Ithaca Police Department. These are small first steps that are absolutely necessary to address the deeply entrenched issues that we're dealing with, and it's just the start of more we need to do going forward. Last year, we all got a glimpse of the culture among IPD officers who we pay when one was caught on tape bragging about assaulting a community member. While I'm glad it turned out that that officer was lying about what he had done, the fact that he felt the need to lie about attacking someone to fit in with the organizational culture is one of many red flags. We must listen to the people who are most impacted in our community, who are calling for change and have been doing so for years. With regard to the county and the proposed plan, I'd like to focus on two critical issues. First, repurposing the SWAT mobile command vehicle. I understand the Ithaca Police do not want to give up this vehicle and that the county would like to continue, the sheriff's department would like to continue using it to transport weapons. I think this is something that's not negotiable. It's become a serious sticking point in the community. We need to make a show of change. And it's not that much of a big ask. We can still use it for all of the mobile communications we need. There's no reason that that needs to be an armed vehicle, and it makes a big difference in the community. Second, creating a Tompkins County Public Safety Review Board. I get it. The sheriff does not want an outside group telling them what to do. They see that as taking power away from the department, and with all due respect, that's the point. The community is saying loud and clear that we need a stronger civilian voice in how the department is run. This review board must be outside and separate from the sheriff's department in order to be effective in providing accountability and transparency that our community wants and is clearly calling for. I urge the legislature to adopt the mild reforms proposed in the reimagining plan. This is a first step, and we must hear the voices in our community that have been calling out to deaf ears for many years. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. West. Followed this time by Robert Lynch.
Good evening. Robert Lynch, 175 Gray Road, Town of Enfield. I'm a Town of Enfield Council person, but I'm speaking tonight strictly as a private citizen. I submitted earlier written comments to the legislature and each legislator. This is a condensation, trying to stay within the three-minute limit. Good evening. George Floyd was killed in Minneapolis. Breonna Taylor in Louisville. Shaun Greenwood, a decade earlier, in Ithaca's West End. Each of these three communities is its own place, each with persons of color dying at the hands of police. And each distinct problem demands its own solution. What's broken in one place is not necessarily broken every place. What serves best the residents of the city of Ithaca does not necessarily address the policing concerns in Tompkins County's rural towns, nor does our larger population necessarily endorse our central city's preferred prescription. In the opinion of many, the collaborative is an arranged marriage that should never have occurred. At every stress point, the relationship strains. The general public did not create it. Voters did not endorse it. Many people now feel they've been forced to accept it. They'd prefer a divorce. Rural residents are scared. They feel city politicians and interest groups have driven this debate. They sense the tail is wagging the dog. And what plays so well in GQ magazine fails so miserably in the shadow of Connecticut Hill. Point one, the IPD SWAT truck. We're told that focus groups have found that truck's presence to be traumatizing. You know what traumatizes me? Dead bodies. Needlessly lost lives, whether black, brown, white, or Asian. Get a grip. Don't let feelings grab hold of your better judgment. Evident imagination counts far less than does real-world palpable fear. What if Boulder someday visits Ithaca? What if we have a live shooter inside Wegmans? Who knows what's best at that moment to protect us? The mayor, the social scientist, or the sheriff? I'd listen to the sheriff. And also, listen to the critical pushback our marginalized populations have given this report. Their critiques underscore reimagining's core weakness, the absence of true accountability, the courage to impose tough, I mean tough, rules upon those who wear the badge and with zero tolerance. Learn to say two little words in the face of police violence and racial bias in blue. You're fired. When tattletale body cam footage captures a sergeant boasting about roughing up a black defendant, don't stop with just a bustin' rank and an order to get lost for 30 days. Show spine. Say, "You're fired." The lack of true toughness. It's why what you're considering tonight so pitifully falls short. No sane dispatcher would ever have sent an unarmed community solution worker to Pete's Grocery that night long ago to serve a potentially violent drug suspect his search warrant. Just as happened then, armed officers would have been there, guns drawn. Irrespective of anything you'll consider tonight, Shaun Greenwood would still have died. The street knows it, but do you? Please act wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. And I want to recognize Lieutenant Jake Young from the Ithaca Police Department.
Hi there. You know, I didn't, I didn't ask to come speak, but I said I'd be available. Those of you that are here have questions about Truck 99 and some of the things that I propose to the common council that we do with that asset. So again, I don't have anything prepared, so if anybody has anything for me, please let me know.
All right. Well, thank you. You're on my list, and I want to make sure to recognize you. Thank you. All right. I am going to go to Rich John, Chair of the Public Safety Committee, to put the resolution on the floor, and then we'll engage in further legislative discussion if there is any. Rich John, Chair of Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Lesley. I would move Document ID 9998, a resolution stating Tompkins County's reimagining public safety plan to be submitted in response to New York State Executive Order 203.
Thank you. May I have a second to that, please? Seconded by Shawna Black. And discussion. Rich?
Thank you, Lesley. I would like to just open the discussion with a couple of comments. One, this has been a long process, and I'd like to thank all the legislators for their participation along the way. But also recognize the voices of the public. We've had a tremendous amount of input for a very long period of time. Whether that's apparent to the people watching our meetings, we have been contacted and communicated with on a regular basis on this issue. The public has been very engaged, and that's really been encouraging. Even in the times of COVID, this has resonated. It's also been a a highly charged discussion, and I think we've been able to manage it at the county legislature in a way so far where we've been able to have a civil discussion about it, which is, I think, very important and valuable. The, as you all know, we've proceeded as in a joint project with the city. There are reasons why that has real value, that these are the two largest police agencies in the county, that any effective changes to process, particularly emergency response, it's going to work a lot better if the two agencies are working together. And the city police department and the sheriff collaborate in lots of ways as it is. So having a consistent and uniform plan makes sense from that direction. We're also able to share cost, and I believe we will be able to provide a more effective training program coming out of this for all of the police agencies in the county as they choose to use them. I will stop talking in just a moment, other than to say I will be supporting the resolution. I know there's going to be a fair amount of amendments offered, but at this point, I believe this is a reasonable compromise. I did hear one of the speakers at least saying, this is an imperfect document, and it's certainly that. And also asking for the legislators to offer their views on the report. The report is an imperfect document as well. It would have been better if we had more time. You know, we are working under an April 1st deadline, and that's unfortunate in a way. On the other hand, it has forced us to address this issue in a meaningful way and to do it with a deadline in mind. I'm also cognizant that we are doing it in the shadow of the trial that's happening in Minneapolis right now. This is a charged, you know, issue for that reason as well. I hope we get through this. I hope we get to a vote this evening that lets us be proud of what we've accomplished, even in its imperfect way. Thanks.
Thank you, Rich. And let's see, lots of hands up. Ann Corman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also second what Rich said regarding the the trial that's going on that the world is watching right now, following the death of George Floyd. And I, for me, this is about taking a first step. This is not a perfect report as as many of us have admitted in the community and here tonight. But I really think this is a really important first step to provide more trust and equity for people of color and other marginalized communities. And with that, I want to propose an amendment to the resolution on line 23 under the resolves, the third resolve that I'd like to change it to create an independent Tompkins County Public Safety Review Board, rather than evaluate the creation of. So I'll repeat that again. I would like it to read, my proposed amendment is create an independent Tompkins County Public Safety Review Board.
Annie, where?
Line 28.
Where are you looking?
Packet page three. Line 28.
Twenty-eight. Okay, I thought you said 23. I was like, that's not a 23. Got it.
It's the third, number three, under those resolved to change it to create an independent Tompkins County Public Safety Review Board.
Okay, there's an amendment on the floor to change that recommendation from evaluate the creation to create an independent. Is there a second for that amendment?
I second it.
Seconded by Henry Granison. Discussion on the amendment. Mike Lane.
Yeah, I don't support this. I don't think we're ready to prescribe a citizens' review board. I think it's time to talk about one, which is what the resolution says at line 23. So I can't support this change.
Thank you. Amanda?
Sure. My hand was up from before, but I did have a question. I guess I would want to know from Ann what, I mean, what is your, how would we go about creating it if we hadn't evaluated what it would be first? Or what is your idea or vision for what it would be? I mean, I think we should create one, but I think we need to know what we're creating. So I don't know if you have an answer to that, but.
This was, I thank you for the question. This, this was, this was, this part of the resolution was This, this was, this was, this part of the resolution was changed. It did see, it did say create a Tompkins County Public Safety Review Board, just so people are aware of that. And it was changed in the public safety meeting to evaluate the creation of. So I'm changing it back to that, to the original recommendation, because I think this is something that we should do. I think there's time to evaluate how we're going to do that. Or to, you know, we're not just going to create it without looking into it and looking at the best way to do that. So I think, to me, that's inherent. And I do think we need an independent review board, as many of the, so a couple of the speakers have talked about tonight, having accountability that's separate from the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else wanting to speak to the amendment? Deborah Dawson.
Yes, we discussed this at length in public safety. And the reason we made the change is because some of us, including myself, had serious reservations about the extent of power an independent review board could have in terms of investigation, imposition of penalties, given that the sheriff was an independent and elected official. And I don't think we really have the time to look into that in this process, which has been abbreviated by the governor's deadline. And that is why we changed the wording. And I'm comfortable with the wording the way it is. I cannot support the amendment that's being offered.
Thank you, Deborah. Anyone else wants to speak to the amendment? Martha Robertson, Rich John, Henry Granison.
Thank you, Lesan. Thank you, Annie, for the suggestion. I know it was, you're right, that's how it started in the Public Safety Committee. I'm looking at the full report packet, that's page 79, where this is highlighted. And you're right, it says create a Tompkins, the recommendation from the report is create a Tompkins County Public Safety Review Board. But then it's a little bit confusing because the first line of the description says, Tompkins County should evaluate the institution of a resident review board to review and or investigate law enforcement misconduct, et cetera. This evaluation should include da, da, da. Tompkins County should identify and determine the responsibilities. And then Tompkins County should additionally call upon New York State to create uniform requirements for such boards, including those with elected sheriffs. So I guess I would like to ask staff, and I guess that Jason Molino or whoever else should answer, what's the, the title is a little different from the description in the report. Can you be, make, make us understand what more clearly was the recommendation?
The recommendation was to determine what would be the extent or powers and authorities and the duties of resident oversight.
Jason, can you speak up a little bit more, please?
Sure, I'm sorry. The recommendation was to evaluate to what extent would the authorities and powers, boundaries and duties of a resident oversight board would include. That's what the recommendation was, and then also asking the state to weigh into this area to put some uniformity for all resident review boards.
So that sounds more like what came out of public safety. Evaluate creation of a board. I mean, I'm, I kind of could go either way, but I'm trying to lean on the long discussions that staff and the community held on this topic, so.
It's intended for you to determine what goes into that. Is it advisory nature? Does it have more than that? Does it have, what are the, what are the duties and the powers and authorities of that board? That's what that's intended for you to determine.
Okay, that sounds like, maybe we, I prefer leaving it at evaluate. But if there's some way to really, I mean, I think we should do it, but, okay, I'll just stop and try to think of what language might, might settle my problem. Thank you very much, Jason.
Thanks, Martha. I'm gonna weigh in just a second. As I look at all of these, and I've looked at all of these recommendations, we can probably do the same thing for all of them. Because, you know, we don't know what any of them is really going to look like. I don't want to open up that can of worms to start there, but I think the idea behind making a statement like that of create is that it's laying out what are expectations or what's our desire that we're going to do. And then the work that comes with implementation is the part that has all of the things about evaluating and measuring and figuring out when we get to the implementation stage of it. But stating what it is, the worst thing we would like to do, I think is what came out of the, the report that essentially says create. I just want to put that, because I can look at all of the others and think, you know, we can evaluate what it looks like to develop a real-time public safety community dashboard. We don't know what that's going to look like. So just want to point that out. And I don't remember the order, but I think it's Rich and then Henry for the amendment, speaking to the amendment.
Thank you, Lesan. I do not support the amendment. We, as Deborah indicated, we had a very full discussion of this at the Public Safety Meeting. And this is probably one of the most critical things we will be doing. And we will be doing it. We're going to try to get this right. And as, as a fulcrum point for a lot of community discussion, we need to be really careful. I favor the present language. Thanks.
Thank you, Rich. Henry?
Yes, I favor the amendment because, again, as Lesan said, it's just the difference of whether we're committed to creating one or whether we're committing to looking at one. I think we're committed to doing one. And in fact, the sheriff has stated that he's committed to doing one. And so what it looks like will have to be negotiated. But again, whether we make the commitment. In fact, I don't think, I even question whether creating a board that's an advisory, that's a, that's an advisory board like this, because we know the city has a review board, we know the city's review board doesn't have, doesn't have enough power. In fact, they're asking for more powers. But this is, this is a middle ground position for me. And again, I mean, unless you can imagine that there would not be a board, then what's the problem with saying create? I'm done.
Thank you, Henry. Anyone else speaking to the amendment? Shawna, a man, I can't tell if your hands are up for that. Okay. All right. Thank you for your comments. Let's take a vote on the amendment. Mike Lane?
No.
Dave McKenna?
No.
Glenn Maury?
No.
Arthur Robertson?
Yes.
Mike Sigler?
No.
No?
Yes, no, no.
Make up your mind, Mike. Yes or no? Shawna Black?
Yes.
Amanda Champion?
Yes.
Deborah Dawson?
No.
Henry Granison?
Yes.
Rich John?
No.
Dan Klein?
No.
Ann Corman?
Yes.
Leslan McBean-Cleaborne? We have six ayes, seven noes. Amendment fails. Back to the main motion on the floor. Thank you, Annie. Shawna Black?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank the people that came here tonight to speak to us, the many emails we've received, all of the people that have worked on this report. I understand you've put in so much time, and I think we all acknowledge that. So I do want to offer my thanks. I think the one big flaw of this report is the fact that the first city recommendation was to dismantle the Ithaca Police Department. And I think unfortunately, sometimes whenever people looked at this plan, people definitely threw the baby out with the bathwater because the other recommendations that I see on that plan, I think, will definitely help our community. And after reading the first recommendation, I think many people said this is garbage. So I hope that we could look beyond that. I personally am a town, a town of Ithaca rep. And so initially, I had some of the same thoughts as you did, Mr. Corey, of that we should not be voting or engaging in any recommendations for the city. I still feel very similar to that. And I think with this resolution, we don't necessarily do that. With that in mind, I was the one that invited Lieutenant Young to this meeting today. I have personally spoken with Lieutenant Young. I've spoken with the past chief of the Ithaca Police. I've spoken with Sheriff Osborn, under Sheriff Olin. Many of us went for a tour of the SWAT vehicle last week. And so, you know, I want everyone to also realize that we've all been doing our homework here. And for many of us, this is really outside of what we've been doing, you know, for the past three years. Many of us have never even served on public safety before. And so we've, we've really tried to become professionals in this field. And we've really tried to surround ourselves with, with the knowledge and talk to the people that are literally quote unquote, "on the ground." We respect the people that, that serve at the sheriff's, the sheriff's department. And we realize that every day they're putting their lives on the line to protect our constituents, and we appreciate that. What Executive Order 203 does, and what I, I want us to really focus on, is the fact that it is looking at the inequalities in policing. And black and brown people have been treated really, really hostile and unkind. And we could say that it doesn't happen here in our county, but it absolutely happens in our county. And Mr. Lynch can refer to how this happens in other places, but it's happening here in our county. And I want to make note of that. And that's the reason why I'm going to vote for the recommendations tonight. But as I mentioned, I did invite Lieutenant Young here today. I spoke with him earlier, and I would like, like to make an amendment for this resolution to remove recommendation number 13, to repurpose the SWAT mobile command vehicle to Tompkins County Department of Emergency Response and develop policies for use of the Mobile Command Center. I believe that we should actually keep the SWAT mobile with the Ithaca Police Department. And I did speak with Lieutenant Young today. He has been working with the Ithaca Common.
Shawna, can I get a second on that before you continue the discussion, please? Seconded by Amanda Champion. Sorry to cut you off. Go ahead.
It's all right. He has been working with the Ithaca Common Council and has really come up with a plan to not just repurpose the SWAT vehicle, but really to reimagine public safety by using this as a tool. For, for those of us that actually went on the tour last week, I think it was really eye-opening to see the fact that it isn't, that it is a central command center. It is the place that people convene whenever there's an emergency, whether it's a flood, whether it's a mental health situation. It is a tool that our deputies and the Ithaca Police use. And we've also heard that historically, that people of color are traumatized whenever they see this black SWAT mobile driving around town with the words "knock, knock" on the front of the vehicle. They also know that there are weapons inside, and it has caused much trauma in our community. Whenever I spoke with Lieutenant Young today, there were some suggestions that he would like to bring forth, and that was repainting the Truck 99 to a less aggressive paint scheme, removing all the lettering related to SWAT. IPDD members will also work with a local group of teens that have an interest in designing graphics for the truck. Also enhancing collaboration with the county by establishing a formal MOU for whenever the Mobile Field Office for Emergency Events will occur. Establish a policy for storage of weapons. I know this was a big concern for many of my colleagues because they did not want weapons on this mobile command. And Lieutenant Young has said that that is something that they will make sure that weapons will not be stored on, on this, this vehicle. And then build community trust. So these are things that, that Lieutenant Young has promised to myself. He's also in conversations with Common Council. And it's something that I think is also very, very important to Ithaca Police, to reestablish that trust and to community build by using something that's been so damaging historically. So I am happy to see if there are any questions for myself or for Lieutenant Young. He is still with us today, and I'm sure that he would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Shawna. There's amendments on the floor. And there are several hands, but I'm not sure which ones. But I'm going to call on Lieutenant Young to see if there's anything he wanted to add to the conversation before their questions. Jake?
Thank you. Not, not too much. Shawna kind of hit on the major points. I think, you know, I think just moving the asset is, is kind of just a check the box thing that I don't think is, is meaningful. So I think this is an opportunity for us to, you know, keep a valuable asset as well as show that we are, we're listening and we hear what people are saying. And a lot of it, we, we can understand why people feel that way. So, you know, I think part of this process is us listening and making meaningful changes and showing that, you know, we're open to, to change on things that are important. So, and that's kind of what we put forward here. I think that pretty much covers it, but I'm open to any questions anybody has.
So I'm going to jump ahead. So Jake, one of the questions, I'm sorry. Lieutenant Young, one of the questions that you and I talked about was about how can community, one, be assured that they can be involved in what the policy development around this vehicle is? We talked very clearly that this is probably the one thing in all of the conversations that have happened that the community is asked to be dismantled, to not be there anymore. So what, what can you say about the level of community involvement that it could be in talking through, coming up with policies for how, if the vehicle stays in service, even if for mobile command and in response, how can the community be involved, and to what extent actually can the community be involved?
Sure. So, you know, what I suggested to common counselors that I spoke with was, you know, put it, put it on a time clock to start, right? We have a certain amount of time to implement some of this stuff because, you know, some of it will take time. But some of the stuff can happen quickly, right? It can be repainted quickly. We already have quotes to have it repainted. So things like that can happen pretty quickly. But, you know, related to how it's used, right? Our, we've agreed that if storing weapons on it are an issue, that, you know, we're willing to, to store them in a separate location because the reality is that the weapons storage is about 3% of what is on the truck, right? The other stuff on the truck is lifesaving equipment, it's technology, it's protective equipment for, for officers and things like that. So, you know, working with the community for education, right? That's kind of the, the big piece. I know you and I talked about some actual groups to sit down and have discussions. I think that's a great idea. I think that after the rebranding is done, I think like a YouTube video, kind of going over the basics of what the truck is, what it does, what we do and do not use it for. You know, those questions that everybody assumes, like, is it armored? Which it is not armored, it never has been. But, you know, those, that's a way to reach a lot of people because unfortunately, we can't have an actual conversation with, with everybody. But those type of things, I think, will go a long way. And as we get out of COVID, fingers crossed, we'll be able to do a lot more of that. Did that answer your question?
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. Let me see if there are other questions for you. Um, I have Mike Lane. And then if you have your hand up to speak to, to this, can you just show me? Okay. Want to go? Thank you. So want to go with Deb Dawson, Amanda Champion? I see you, Henry. Go ahead, Deb.
Well, I, I wanted to let Rich John speak first.
Okay.
I just wanted to let everybody know, I, I'd sent out an email earlier today that if this, uh, amendment is carried, I would like to offer an amendment to add an additional resolved to make sure that if the city ends up not maintaining the, the vehicle, that we would then step in and evaluate whether we should have a county mobile command center. And I provided proposed language to all the legislators. I can read it if you'd like, but just to let you know that that'll be coming if it passes. Thanks.
Okay. Appreciate that, Rich.
And, and I would be seconding that. Um, so now I'm going to take my turn to speak that you offered, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, I think there's been so much disagreement among the legislators about the disposition of vehicle 99. And, you know, I know there are some people who feel like we shouldn't accept this vehicle from the city and they won't vote for that. And then there are others who won't vote for it if we accept the vehicle and it's not under the sheriff's control. And then there are others who won't support it if we accept the vehicle and give it to Doer. So I think we need more time as, as a legislature to decide if we are going to assume responsibility for this vehicle as a county, how we're going to do that and what it's going to look like. And a combination of Shauna's offered amendment and the amendment that Rich will offer if Shauna's amendment passes gives us that time to have these very necessary combine, uh, conversations. And that's why I'm going to support this.
Thank you. Ann Corman, Mike Lane, Henry Granison, not Ann Corman, Amanda Champion, sorry.
Okay, thanks. Um, I, uh, thank you, Shauna, for everything you've said. And, and Lieutenant Young as well for the information. Um, I also visited the vehicle last week or whenever that was. And I really appreciated the opportunity to be able to see it and, you know, talk to folks there. Um, I'm just trying to get clarification on Shauna, your amendment is to remove that number 13 completely? I thought it said something differently in the email, but.
Yes, I'm going to remove it completely. Um, because the status quo is that the city has it. And so we would essentially go back to the status quo. And then the city is going to add verbiage in their resolution tomorrow.
Okay. And then Rich's, uh, proposed amendment to follow up on that is that we would then still consider, um, whether, what we want to do with it or what our part will be in it if the city does not want it. Okay. I do think, I mean, I think that it's a bigger conversation, as Deb said, and that we should be a part of that conversation, whatever it is. Like if, if the city does keep it and wants to, you know, rebrand it, then I think we should still be a part of that. Um, if they don't want it at all, if they want to get rid of it, then we need to have a bigger conversation about what do we want to do? So that's why I very much support taking this out and having that bigger discussion at a better time. So I'll support the amendment.
Thank you, Amanda. Mike Lane?
Uh, I thought your comments, Shauna, were very well taken, uh, on the, what you, what you've talked to us about. My, my question comes, who makes the decision about this vehicle? We don't own it. Uh, I believe the city owns it.
Yeah.
And you just said something, Shauna, that piqued my curiosity. You said the city's going to change its language to what?
Um, the city has actually been working with, uh, Lieutenant Young and some of the other, um, uh, officers at Ethica Police. And they are, um, in the middle of navigating what they would like their resolution tomorrow to look like. And it's going to have specifics. Um, and I did send out something via email today that Lieutenant Young sent out as far as their idea of what, um, this vehicle would look like in the upcoming months. Um, and essentially at the end of a 12-month period, they would evaluate if it's met those goals.
Oh, okay. But so they're not offering it to us yet. Is that right?
But let me ask Lieutenant Young. I think, I think the city is, uh, and IPD, Lieutenant Young can speak to this, is intending on keeping the asset that they have in truck 99. Is that correct, Lieutenant Young?
So I can't, I can't speak for the city or the common council on that. Um, that is what we, myself and the agency are proposing. Um, and in my conversations, uh, it's been well received, but I a hundred percent cannot speak to what their exact intentions are going to be tomorrow.
Right. But your proposal as IPD is to keep the asset with IPD?
Correct. Yeah. And do, uh, all those things and possibly more. Uh, and then also, you know, it'd continue to be a countywide asset, um, as it has been, in the past.
Okay.
Can I just finish, please? Um, so I, uh, I think that we need to take this out because we don't know what the city wants to do with it yet. Uh, that doesn't mean, and I, and, and Rich, I was glad to hear your, uh, your proposal if this one passes, uh, because that, that leaves the door open. I just want to say how long we've actually been talking about this from afar, not because we own it, but because we understand the issues that a vehicle like that, black vehicle raises. We've talked about, uh, the recommending, uh, changing the color scheme, et cetera on that. So I'm glad to hear that, that, uh, Lieutenant Young is, is talking with that department. I think that's pretty important. Uh, I will vote to support Shauna's amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Um, the amendment on the table is to remove number 13 from, uh, our resolution, uh, the recommendation number 13. So regardless of, of what the city will or will not do, that's the recommendation, but we do have some intel from Lieutenant Young on their intention as IPD for, uh, a proposal to, uh, do some things differently with it. Um, Henry Granison?
Um, thank you for, for your words Detective, uh, Mr. Young. Um, I was curious, were you still, with, with a proposal still, um, housed the uniforms and other equipment in the, in the vehicle?
Yeah, thank you. So our, yeah, our proposal is that it would still, right? So when it was built, it was built, uh, to use every inch of space for storage, right? Underneath, on top, on the sides, every area that wouldn't be able to be used by a person standing there, um, was utilized. So it holds a large amount of equipment, um, negotiations equipment, um, protective equipment, technology, um, and a whole bunch of other things that we use at different incidents. So the idea would be that the weapons were a concern. So I think I mentioned earlier that that's about 3% of what's on the truck. So we, we would be good with removing those if that, um, satisfied concern of those in the community. Um, but everything else, uh, would remain so that it's easily moved, easily available, um, and, and there when we need it. Because to move that amount of gear without a truck that's designed for it, um, just rough calculations would be several, um, enclosed trailers worth of equipment. That's not, um, not going to make things very easy or efficient i- in the event of an emergency.
Also, I know that when we visited the, the SWAT vehicle, the, um, one of the people there, Kyle, I believe his name was, said that they were going to probably change the, the flag jackets from a, from a wo- military, military looking to maybe a black, all-black uniforms. Is that something that the city is also considering? Of changing, changing the look so it doesn't look as militaristic?
Yeah. So you're talking about the uniforms that, that officers wear.
Right.
That, so that is definitely something that we're looking at. Um, and it's not really included in this, this proposal, but is something that we're looking at, um, as far as, you know, using the right type of uniform for the environment, right? So if you're, if you're out in the woods, um, you know, it makes sense to have camouflage on. If you're in the city, it doesn't make sense necessarily. And it creates the, the look, the, of, of a militarized unit. Um, so yeah, we are looking at getting back to more traditional, um, uniforms that match that of, you know, an officer that you would see on the street. So, uh, the protective gear will still be the same, right? If we're at an incident where somebody has a gun, uh, we're still going to want to wear a ballistic helmet, right? And a large vest just to give us protection. But, um, the idea being that that look would be more of a blue or a black, um, to kind of represent the environment that we're in. Um, so that's an ongoing, uh, discussion. But everybody, uh, related to the team is in agreement that, that that's a good idea and better represents, uh, what we are and what people expect of us.
Okay. I have just one last question. I was wondering whether, is there a way to get you to basically get the city to, well, I guess the, the mayor does control the SWAT vehicle, correct? And so he can in fact basically lay out many of these a- agreements that we're talking about? In terms of like the changing of the uniforms and everything else?
Yeah. I mean, I would say, yeah, he's, he's the, the chief law enforcement officer of the city, right? The chief answers to him. Um, so, but, um, so I can't really speak for him, but, but I can tell you that.
But he just popped on.
We've already, we've already been in, in discussions internally. Um, that, and you know, while we're on the topic, not to prolong your meeting here, but just the name SWAT in general, right? It's, it's a term that started in the seventies. It has really negative connotations. TV shows. And the reality is that some SWAT teams across the country have done things poorly, right? I, um, and created, uh, created some, uh, a bad name for, for that on top of it. So, you know, we, we're going to look at a number of things, including, uh, is there something more fitting for what we do, right? Uh, we're called SWAT now, but it doesn't really represent, um, all the things that we do. So we're looking at, at things like changing the name to better represent what we actually do, um, as well as some of the other things that you talked about. So I appreciate you letting me jabber about that.
Thank you. Unless Avante wants to weigh in quickly.
Thank you, Henry.
To me. Yeah. Yes. Well, the lieutenant is, is characteristically, uh, um, articulate and, and well-informed and on point on this issue as he is on, on, uh, almost all issues. But so do not get any ideas legislature about hiring him away, uh, because we need him. So the, the, uh, yes, if the legislature is not interested in taking over the truck, the, the community feedback was voluminous. I think, uh, when speaking tactically about things that our law enforcement does, this was the number one tactical thing we did that drew attention and controversy and consternation. And again, for many of the reasons that the lieutenant mentioned about the history of SWAT activity, both putting down civil uprisings in the sixties and seventies and the issue of the, the, um, service of no-knock warrants have gone poorly in the eighties and beyond. So if the legislature is not interested in taking over the vehicle, the council is interested in reprogramming it, uh, some of the things, the aesthetic things that were mentioned today. But to go even deeper into what the lieutenant's been talking about and turning it into a more purely mobile command center.
Thank you, Mayor. Martha Robertson?
Thank you. Um, I appreciate this conversation and I'm slightly more confused. Um, Lieutenant, you, in the document that we have here that Sean afforded to us, you, you talk about all the equipment that is in the truck. Um, to move the weight and volume of different equipment it stores would take a minimum of three, four, four dual axle trailers. It wouldn't be practical. Now, now you're talking about it's only 3% of the equipment. Are you saying that the weapons are only 3%? And when you talk about all this other stuff, it's robots, radios, cameras, et cetera?
Yes, e- exactly. The weapons account for about 3% of what's actually stored on there, which is why, again, if it's a point of, uh, public concern, then we're willing to store those in a different location. So that, that way the other stuff, um, that's important is there easily movable. And, uh, in the time of emergency, we, we're able to mobilize quickly for all different types of incidents.
Okay. Um, now back to Savante. Savante, you said if the legislator, legislature is not interested in it, um, I, 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 I'm one legislator. I would be interested in responding to the community on this and figuring out, out a way to ma- maintain the functionality that whatever functionality is truly needed, not overreaching functionality that's not needed. So, um, I guess my concern is if, if, if we vote for this amendment and status quo, we go back to the status quo. First off, I, Lieutenant, you said that there work, the city, there will be language because the, the resolution that's on the city's website right now doesn't include language. It says that this will go to the county. So you're saying it's in draft. It's not, it's not public yet, right?
I, I'm making an assumption because again, I cannot speak for common council and the mayor can maybe chime in, but I would presume that that would be the intention.
Yeah, there's, yes, that's right. There's draft language right now. And the assumption is so, and I don't know if this helps Martha or fur- further muddles the waters, but if the legislature decides that you do not want to take ownership of the truck, city will retain ownership. We will still pursue a repurposing. Seems like council's lined up along the lines of what the lieutenant suggested. We won't do that without consultation with the sheriff's office and the county. So even if your resolution doesn't speak to it, I can commit to you that we can continue to talk about how to, uh, make this piece of equipment most useful, least intimidating.
Okay. Well, that's good. But the question then to you is, what about the community? You, you said that this is, was the most, uh, the biggest lightning rod. I, if I can, that's how it sounds. Vehicle is the biggest lightning rod for community members. Is th- this current proposal truly going to respond to that? Or is it just putting lipstick on a pig? I mean, what?
Yeah. I, I think the best path forward, the, the one I endorse is the one that's in the report. I think that's most responsive to community concerns, the one that transfers the, the truck to Doer. I think failing that, if, if that does not get enough votes on the legislature and/or council, um, I think we can still go further than just a, a rebranding. You know, I still think we can work through both the healing plan, which is part of the report, and the Community Justice Center to develop, uh, a plan for the future of SWAT and SINT and the future of this equipment that's responsive to community concerns.
Uh, thank you. That clarifies a little bit. I, I would say that I do wish there's a, number 14 on this list is conduct a review of SWAT callouts to determine appropriate use of service and equipment. I wish we had that information, uh, already of how, how the truck's been used for what, you know, what differences does it make? And I'm not sure that having it as a PR vehicle for the sake of the police, it might actually be counterproductive. So what's the real use of it? I wish, I, it looks like we're, you know, I hope we will go forward with that in any case. But so what you just said is you support what's in the draft report. And I appreciate that clarity. Thanks a lot, Savante.
Thank you. And Ann Corman and then Mike Sickler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we can't, the county. So we can't, the county can't, or doesn't, isn't considering taking the current vehicle that we're talking about. We're not talking about taking it from the city without them giving it to us. So, so this is new information for me hearing what the mayor's saying. That they're going, if we don't want it, then they're going to figure out what to do with it. And I'm looking at Rich John's proposed resolution, which I believe, you know, I know, realize it's not on the floor yet, but it's talking about if the city decides to give us the vehicle, then we would look at how we would maintain a mobile command center with it. So I, I would, I, I think what would kind of solve this, at least in my mind, is if we, if we could substitute Rich's wording in his resolution, rather than just taking out the present one, because that, that does two things. That leaves it back up to the city to make their decision and based on whatever they decide tomorrow night, then we'll be all set. And also it doesn't leave us in limbo if we vote to support this resolution that was brought, or the amendment that was brought forth just now of just taking out a, a certain, certain resolved, then it could leave us in limbo with nothing. And we haven't voted the other one in, which could not, which could not be voted in. So I, I, I don't feel comfortable voting for this unless we can somehow switch the language to Rich's or something similar. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Mike Sickler.
Hi, I actually have two questions and it can be fielded by either Jake or Savante, I suppose. When I read the report, I, I really only read six comments that were against the SWAT vehicles. I don't know, there must be more out there, but that's what I saw. And, and the six that I saw weren't just calls for the SWAT vehicle to end, it was for SWAT to end. So my question then is, we're talking about a reimagining, I guess, of the, of the SWAT vehicle. Is SWAT going to continue? I mean, are, are you going to have a SWAT team that trains in special weapons? In tactical, you know, in tactical ways to solve these kind of situations that come up? So that's my first question. I can go to either one of you, I suppose.
That's a question that I did pose as well to Jake. You know, the vehicle is one thing, but the operations are different. So whoever wants to respond, Savante, so you unmuted yourself?
Oh, yeah, just in case, just wanted to be at the ready. So the, yes, definitely came up more than six times. Comes up about six times in afternoon as you walk around town. And you can read more in some of the appendices that, that collected, not just the survey data, but also the written responses to some of the questions we posed to the community. Yeah, the, the next recommendation talks about the future of SWAT. I believe that we will always require, I shouldn't say always, I believe that we right now and for the foreseeable future will require special training to respond to highly dangerous situations, particularly active shooter situations and hazardous material and bomb threats. The shape of that team, the scope of it, what it gets called out to do, all requires further study. And that's called for in the very next recommendation. And I think the lieutenant spoke pretty eloquently about the need to, to do that deep dive earlier.
Okay, well, I guess it kind of leads into my second question is that, you know, when you put this into service 20 years ago, and you know, you raised private money for this in part, and the city kicked in money, Cornell kicked in money. I mean, has the need from 20 years ago, has, it doesn't seem to me like that's dramatically changed. But I, I'm asking you, do you believe that that's dramatically changed from 20 years ago with the need, with the needs are?
Yeah, I think so much, y- y- yes, I think the whole world has changed dramatically from 20 years ago. And I think to not review something that is as publicly controversial as this in this moment, both in American history and our city's history, would be a missed opportunity. So yeah, for sure. You bought something 20 years ago and you've been operating it the same way, it is time to do a review.
I want to also recognize that our sheriff and undersheriff are on, I think they still are, I can't tell. They've been engaged in conversations with us around this at the last public safety meeting as well. And I wondered if either of them had any comments or thoughts. I wanted to give you the opportunity.
You're muted.
You're being profound, Derek, you're being profound.
Always. Yeah, I heard about this conversation with Lieutenant Young a little bit ago. I wasn't part of the initial conversation. I can't say I really have anything to add to it at this point. So I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have much to add either. Like I said, I echo Derek's comments. We didn't have an opportunity to speak with lieutenant prior to this meeting and weren't aware that this was going to be talked about. So I don't have much to add at this time.
All right, thank you. Shawna, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just have one more comment. You know, I, I feel like right now the SWAT is a political hot potato. And, you know, unfortunately, I think this is, you know, kind of been a problem child in the city of Ithaca. And it feels like with this recommendation, it is something that the city is looking to, you know, it feels like you, you guys are trying to dump it on the county, you know? And that doesn't feel good, you know? And whenever I spoke with Lieutenant Young today, the conversation went much differently than I thought it would, than I thought it would go. And the thought of Ithaca Police trying to get this right, you know, and make amends with the community, like that to me makes sense. I don't understand why we would move, move a vehicle from, from one agency to another. It sounds like there are very few people at the sheriff's department that are trained to actually respond and do SWAT. It sounds like the majority of them are trained at the Ithaca Police. And it, you know, I, I think this is your chance, City of Ithaca, to get it right and to make amends. And, you know, I, I don't want to feel like this is something that's being dumped in our laps that we're going to have to fix. I want to see the City of Ithaca do that work.
Shawna, I appreciate your sentiments, but I don't want to, you know, I want to, I want to say something. I don't want to feel like this was something the city was doing to us. This was a recommendation that came from a large working group and not the city, you know, Lieutenant Young, SWAT, the PD, or the mayor saying, here, county, y'all take this hot potato. I think it, it came out of the large working group as a recommendation, you know, to repurpose SWAT, to move it someplace else and so on and so forth.
Yeah, that's right. And we're certainly not shy, Shawna, about, I mean, if, if anything, I, I believe we've demonstrated a willingness to dig deep, make hard choices and to heal things with the community by making deep structural changes. So we in no way want to dump any of that responsibility on the county. I think this just flowed from the fact that the county does share quite a lot of the dispatch and collaborative emergency response systems, most evident at the Department of Emergency Response. And the county does share as part of the SWAT and SINT teams. As you mentioned, sharing personnel and the cost of training that personnel. So this seems like a joint responsibility, not something we would want to dump on, on our friends in the county.
Thank you. I'm going to entertain two other questions and then we need to take this amendment to a vote. Martha Robertson, Deb Dawson, there you go.
Yeah, thanks. I was talking to another legislator this afternoon and we sort of agreed, gee, we maybe should have done it, a joint meeting with common council. But we can't. So I, I feel like, I like the, I, and I didn't at first, but I like the idea of it going up to the, to the department. DOR is Department of Emergency Response for, for viewers who aren't so acronym friendly. So I like the recommendation of it going to DOR because it seems to me that will be a lot, used a lot more for, as the mobile command unit. I think that's, that's a good use of this. But at the end of the day, it is, it is kind of a city decision. And so I, I guess I would support the amendment pending the city decision. And then I think the, I'm looking down at Rich, Rich's language may, maybe is something that we want to put in here somewhere to make sure. But I, I do want to put out a thought that as the city, if the city does look at keeping it, I really think there's a misunderstanding of using that thing as a PR vehicle that kids like it. I think it has at least some, maybe more impact as something that scares people. It's not, I mean, fire trucks go to community fairs and that's great. The SWAT vehicle has a real different feel to it. And even if you take out some of the weapons or some of the scary equipment, I'm really not sure it's doing the city any favors as a PR thing. So just throwing that out there. I guess what I'm saying is I, in, in the interest of deferring, I, I would support keeping the recommendation from the report, but in deferring to the city to figure out, do they, do they want to tackle it and do what the lieutenant is talking about? I would support, for tonight, support Shawna's resolution.
Thank you. Deb Dawson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments on some things that my colleagues have said. I mean, we can view this as the city's dumping a hot potato in our lap, but viewed more generously, I think, as has been pointed out to us by a number of people who've written to us and commented tonight. You know, there are different communities within the county. I, I think the city community includes a substantial number of people who find this vehicle traumatizing. My constituents don't. So it could be just a question of moving the vehicle from a community that finds it traumatizing to a community that doesn't. That's, that's a possible way to look at this as how this transfer of the vehicle would address the concerns of the community and the purposes of Executive Order 203. And the second piece of it is, depending on what the city decides it wants to do, I personally don't mind us taking the vehicle, but I would want it to, I, I would want it to be controlled in a way that would allow the sheriff's department as an integral part of the countywide SWAT team to decide if it needs to mobilize it and to mobilize it in very short order. Simply because I know from my own experience that trying to coordinate among agencies takes time. And in an emergency situation, especially an active shooter situation, time translates into lives lost. And I don't want to see that happen. So thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ann Corman, you get the last word on the amendment.
Thank you. Can I make a, an amendment to this amendment?
Yes, you may.
Does that allow? Okay, so my amendment is to add the words, "resolved in the event the City of Ithaca determines not to maintain the SWAT, SINT, C-I-N-T vehicle as a city asset, the county shall conduct its own analysis as to the utility of maintaining it as a mobile communication center."
I'll second that. Ann, seconded by Deborah. Dan Klein.
I feel like we're overthinking this one. I, I really sense that there's agreement that we should take this discussion off the table for now, that there's going to be some discussion that has to happen between sheriff's department, Ithaca Police Department, common council, the legislature, and perhaps others. That's going to need some time to happen. We just heard that the sheriff and undersheriff haven't really talked to the Ithaca Police about this yet. The thing that we're voting on tonight is something we have to send to Albany on Thursday. This does not have to be in it. I would hope that we just vote as quickly as possible to remove this recommendation from our list. And we all understand that the conversation will continue. That would be the quickest, simplest, easiest thing to do. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Martha.
I would like to support Annie's amendment. And in, in the way Rich wrote it, it would, there was also the phrase, "within the county public safety system." Annie, did you mean to not include that or did you?
I purposely left that out so we, we would have a more, we could figure that out later.
More open-ended, okay.
Right.
So then you, then you suggest, you didn't say where to put that. Would that go like at numbered bullets, like as a, as a final resolve? Or as like, as a second resolve?
It would be instead of the one that we're taking out, I believe.
This is a list, we're taking numbers out of a list. It seems like it would be, Rich has got his hand up. I guess, all right, I, I think we should nail down where it would go. But I, I would support this, this addition.
All right, I'm going to recognize you, Rich, but folks that don't want us to get into the weeds of, of all of this. The amendment is to remove one recommendation and then there's an amendment to the amendment to change that a little. And the rest of it will come at implementation stage. Rich John.
Thank you, Leslyn. I had offered that I would be making this separate proposal after this discussion, but it, it can be considered at the same time. My concern is that the vehicle is a significant public safety asset and has been, and that we should not make a decision by accident. And what, what this would do is it effectively would have a, a springing power, if I can borrow something from other areas of the law, that only if the city decides it does not want it. If it goes through its review, it says, you know, this isn't working, we're going to get rid of it. Then we would, we're committing to take it up. I would not do it as an undertaking because it's not something we're going to do now. But I think it does help by putting in as a resolution to declare our intent in the event that we would then commit to do this. So I would support those two things being considered together in one vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's take the amendment to the amendment for a vote. If you vote yes, you are supporting Annie's amendment. That, Annie, repeat the language.
Sir, "resolved in the event the City of Ithaca determines not to maintain the SWAT slash SINT vehicle as a city asset, the county shall conduct its own analysis as to the utility of maintaining it as a mobile communication center." And then I would just like to add a comment there. This does not even say we're going to take the vehicle. It's just we were going to do an analysis. So it doesn't really, I think, bind us too much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, roll call vote.
Mike Lane?
No.
Dave McKenna?
Yes.
Glenn Maury?
No.
Martha Robertson?
Yes.
Mike Sickler?
Yes.
Shawna Black?
Yes.
Amanda Champion?
Yes.
Deborah Dawson?
Yes.
Henry Granison?
Yes.
Rich John?
Yes.
Dan Klein? Dan Klein?
No.
Ann Corman?
Yes.
Leslyn McBean Claiborne? Fifty-nine i, four noes.
Annie, the amendment carries. So now what we have is removing thirteen with the city doing, the county doing an analysis in the event that the city decides it doesn't want to go ahead with this Mobile Command Unit, or the SWAT Unit, that the county will do an analysis of its utility for public safety, I can't remember, in Tompkins County. So that's what we have on the floor now. I see Glenn Maury.
I, just a really quick question. Are we going to be removing fourteen as well?
Are you recommend, are you going to move that?
Demand is, or Shawna's resolution. Is there any?
Resolution only remove thirteen.
I think it would still be nice for us to get an idea of what the, what the SWAT callouts are for the county. I mean, we're still going to be doing them, and it would be nice to see what, what they are and who they are.
Okay.
Thank you.
You Glenn, thank you Shawna. Mike Sigler?
I don't understand how, what you just read is different from what we just voted on. Were we just, I'm sorry, I must, I'm misunderstanding.
Too bad. Just vote, just vote yes.
Oh, I mean, Annie's resolution was what we just voted on.
So what is on the table right now? And please correct me if I'm wrong. Kathy, do you have it?
It's removing recommendation number thirteen.
Maybe I should have Kathy just repeat it instead of me.
The, the amendment on the floor is removing recommendation number thirteen.
And?
There's more to this. It was amended.
And the resolved. The Ann Corman read yes.
Right. That good? All right, let's vote on it. We're voting on the amendment. Roll call vote, go ahead.
Mike Lane?
Yes.
Dave McKenna?
Yes.
Glenn Maury?
Yes.
Martha Robertson?
Yes.
Mike Sigler?
Yes.
Shawna Black?
Yes.
Amanda Champion?
Yes.
Deborah Dawson?
Yes.
Henry Granison?
Yes.
Rich John?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Ann Corman?
Yes.
Leslyn McBean Claiborne?
Yes.
We have thirteen i, zero noes.
It carries, thank you very much. Now we're back to the main motion that was on the table that's now amended. And that was the one that was on the agenda as is being amended. Amanda Champion.
Thank you, Leslyn. I wanted to say this at the very beginning.
I suspected that. And yeah, we can just kind of.
But I, I didn't get a chance, and I'm sure I'll have more thoughts as we go on. But I would just like to remind everyone that this meeting is taking place on the traditional homelands of the Kewa Nation. This land was taken by, by white European people from the original native people who lived here for uncountable generations. It was taken by force and by genocide. And I offer my respect to the elders of the Kewa Nation, past, present, and future. And that's all for the moment.
Thank you, Amanda, for the recognition of the Kewa Peoples. Martha Robertson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So is it time to make a couple of other amendments?
It's time for making amendments, voting on what's on the floor.
Okay, all right. I've got a couple of small tweaks, but then something slightly more substantive. I emailed people about it today. I think in the very first line, we should have the date from Executive Order 203 and name Andrew Cuomo. So the amendment would be, whereas on June 12th, 2020, comma, New York State Governor Andrew Cuomo issued Executive Order 203.
I'd consider that friendly.
That is plenty friendly.
All right. Line thirty-two talks about populations such as the houseless. I think it would be much better to say, such as people experiencing homelessness.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Seems fine. Who seconded this resolution? It's been so long, remember? Shawna, you did?
That's friendly.
Okay, and that's fine with you, too?
Okay. The next page, online sixteen and seventeen. Since we named the sheriff and the police chief, I would like, but give the titles for District Attorney and Assigned Counsel Director. I would like to add the name Matt Van Houten and Lance, names, Matt Van Houten and Lance Salisbury. Tompkins County District Attorney Matt Van Houten and Director of Assigned Counsel Lance Salisbury.
Friendly.
Okay.
Yes.
And then on the, this is the slightly more important. The creation of this Community Justice Center is really the key to this whole thing, and it's not mentioned in this resolution at all. I actually, when I read the report itself, I thought, why isn't, why isn't that one of the recommendations? It wasn't. I would like to add a number here. So if we've already, if we've taken out thirteen, so that this would become the new seventeen, that it should say, "County and city, colon, create and operate a collaborative community justice center to implement these plans and provide reports to the city and county regarding progress in implementation." So I can, it just establishes that we're also, another thing we're going to do is, is create the justice center. And happily read it again if somebody.
Yeah, I, I would, Martha, I, I would not consider that friendly. I think we should unfortunately have a little conversation around that because there's some logistic issues that we raised there.
So let me see if there's a second.
I can explain. I think that.
Yes. Henry, are you seconding?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Martha.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's in fact a quarter of a million dollar project that we're talking about according to the budget, I think that was the number, the budget estimates we were given. I, importantly, actually, if this is, this whole resolution is going to the Director of the Budget at, in New York State as our way of, you know, showing how we're complying with, with EO 203, if they read this, I, I can imagine that there's like this big gap. Well, how are they going to do all this stuff? And I think really the CJC is critical to making all the rest of it work. I understand that, you know, makes sense to have a separate resolution about that, which, which Rich brought to public safety last week, and they will talk about at, and further develop next, at the next Public Safety Committee. I just think it should be named in here as one of our action steps because it is a critical action step.
Thank you, Martha. I'll go across the board. Mike or Dan, did I see one of yours? Your head?
No, we are.
Oh, okay. Deborah, Shawna, Rich, or Rich, Shawna, Deborah, sorry.
Thanks. Martha, I agree with you. This is a critical step. We do have a separate resolution to address this that we will be bringing before, it'll come back to the Legislature probably the end of April. But we've had extensive sort of coordination with the city. We would then be undoing that. They're proceeding by a separate resolution as well. Part of the reasoning for that is that this was not something that the, the state asked us to explain as part of our plan. It wasn't set out as an under, or a recommendation from the draft report, so it didn't carry over from that direction. I would really prefer that we just keep them segregated. Certainly, we will be doing a CJC. I agree with you completely. I just don't think it's, I, I don't want to say it's none of the state's business, but it isn't. It's our business, and we will do it. I would prefer it be kept in parallel with what the city is doing. Thanks.
Thank you, Rich. Shawna, Debra?
Yeah, I appreciate your sentiment, Martha, and I, I definitely agree. That's going to be a major part moving forward. My concern is that if we add that, that we're going to lose some buy-in from our legislators here. And I think we want to have the strongest representation that we can have. And I'm afraid that we might lose a few people that, that would support this if we add that.
Debra, then Mike Lane?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Martha, I do understand your concern with this, but we have made it clear in, in one of the whereas's on lines thirty-six to forty of the first page, that beyond complying with the requirements of the executive order, the intention of this project has been to make a good faith effort to begin a long-term process of making substantive improvements, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think how we go about doing that long-term process doesn't necessarily need to be spelled out in this resolution and in deference to the interest of staying more or less in lockstep with the city on this. I would defer to Rich's preference to, you know, leave it for a second resolution.
Thank you. Mike Lane?
The I, too, would prefer to leave it separate. I think there's a lot of questions for my, for me that are unanswered about this Community Justice Center, not only, not only about the cost, but the supervision and exactly what we would be asking the potential employees who would be hired to do for us. We have a lot of employees who have been affected by the COVID crisis, and we're talking about hiring new, new employees for some kind of a community justice center. With all the good intentions, let's give it a little more time to cook here.
We're cooking. Martha.
Yeah, I just, I, I don't understand how you can even, I'm sorry, say yes to all these other things because there's no identified mechanism for getting them done. So I, as far as what the, what the city is doing, we just, we just took out something that was in, supposedly in the city's resolution. I, I don't, that doesn't make any sense to me. Otherwise, why are we here? Might as well just rubber stamp what the city does. So I, I really do think this is missing from the, this resolution. I think it's, all right, I'll just leave it that. I think this is, was actually, like, everything else in, on this list needs to be fleshed out. Everything on this list needs to be fleshed out and figured out how it gets done. And this just puts a name on it, doesn't indicate anything further. That's what the following resolution that the committee will look at, that's what will happen there. But this is just the same as the other recommendations, so.
Thank you, Martha. Henry Granison?
Yes, I mean, I agree with Martha on this point. I mean, in public safety, until we move the table, the other resolution, we were going to pass it, and having come before us tonight. And so I don't see that there's, there's much difference unless, unless we don't intend to do it. And if we don't intend to do it, then, then why are we even talking about it? I mean, if we intend to have a criminal justice center, then why can't put it in? In fact, you know, again, there, there is a budget element to this. It was going to the head of the budget. And so the fact that we're creating something might, you know, argue that we, we can get funding for it. But, you know, I just see it that way.
So I'll weigh in quickly and said, you know, the, I think it's a second to last resolve that speaks to the legislature determining next steps, developing programmatic expression of this plan, budget priorities, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, is in there. I don't, I can't say for sure that a community justice center is what I will support. As we continue conversation, there might be a different way of going about implementation that we are not sure about at this point. If we're committing to saying that we will, you know, look at budget priorities and invest resources, I would just as soon see something that says the legislature will invest, you know, resources in implementing this plan, which I think is captured in the second to last resolve, rather than being very specific about a community justice center. That was a, a recommendation that needs a lot more conversation. So thank you for your thought behind it, Martha. I hear you. You know, well.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I never did get an answer to a question I asked earlier. Why wasn't this one of the recommendations?
Why wasn't it one of the recommendations? You mean coming out of public safety?
Coming out of the report. I just, I, I thought I asked that earlier. I, I don't know if Jason has more of a.
I think it is a recommendation. It's not listed in the same format, but it is, it is a recommendation.
It was in the recommendation.
It, it doesn't have a number, but it, that's what I thought. It's like, that is what's proposed to make this happen. I, I just, I guess it's not a hill to die on.
It's a formidable argument. Makes sense.
You know, we're looking at all these budget numbers, and if the message here to the community is we're serious about this project, it seems to me, including the CJC in here, and I understand we haven't fleshed out exactly who works there and what kind of people and how much is it going to cost, clearly, but adding the CJC in here says to the community, we're serious, we're going to, we're going to do this.
I'll tell you, what's more serious to me is the legislature adding in there that the legislature will commit funding to it, to the community. That's much more serious, that we will commit, you know, funding for implementing, flushing out, whatever the terminology is, and implementing these recommendations rather than in a specific tool like the CJC, because we don't know if that's what it is. And again, you know, I, I don't know that I see that. Well, I see it in the resolve. Amanda.
Yeah, I was just going to ask Rich, as the Chair of Public Safety, what your plan is with that other resolution for the CJC.
Yeah, I, thank you, Amanda, because we are serious about it. I want, I want the public to know. This will be coming to the Public Safety Committee in April. We were planning on trying to get it passed this month, but there were a lot of questions on how the money moves and the approval process in setting it up that we, the legis, the will of the legislature appeared to be that we really wanted to understand what it was going to look like, how it was going to operate, and test the budget numbers a bit, so kick the tires. I intend to get us to that point by the April Public Safety Meeting. And yes, all of you legislators are going to have to vote on it. So you're going to have to stand up in public and vote on this real soon, and the public should know that. Thanks.
You heard it. Ann Corman?
So it sounds like what Rich is saying, he's committed to working on this as Chair of Public Safety, so I, I, I don't, you know, if we need to soften the language a little bit more, you know, that we're going to evaluate this soon, or we're going to evaluate this, the, the CJC, whether, you know, whether to have one? Because it sounds like we're, if we're committed to doing that, what would be wrong in us saying we're committed to looking into it, evaluating it?
Are you offering an amendment, Annie?
I don't remember the exact wording. Yes, I'll offer an amendment that, if Martha could help me figure this out, how the wording, how to put the word evaluate in there?
Well, you know, page ninety-seven of the report says Tompkins County and the Ithaca plan to hire that. Tompkins County and the State Department plan to hire dedicated staff members and implement a community justice center, similar to an emergency operations center. So.
And so your amendment said implement? What did your amendment say?
I just kind of took the verbs, you know, and I, I got too many documents here, but I took the verbs that sounded like, you know, create a CJC and operate. I could have put fund, create and fund. I assumed if we created and operated, we have to pay for it. So.
And we trust the Chair of the Public Safety Committee and ourselves that come April and our colleagues at the City Council, that we can move this forward come April, so we don't bog down the process of trying to get the other part of it done?
Yeah, I assume that's right. I just, I don't know what the harm is in putting it in, but I guess I said it's not a hill to die on, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you all very, very, very much. Annie?
So much emotion on the table. Is Martha withdrawing?
Was there a motion on it? Oh, yes, Martha moved and Henry seconded it, that's right. Shoo. All right. Are we voting on it? Are you pulling it back, Martha? What's going on? Henry?
No, I'd like, I mean, again, the budget document that Deanna sent us two versions of, develop a community justice center to operationalize the plan. You know, there's a budget for it, a staffing proposal, anyway. Now, let's, I just, let's take a vote.
So you're not withdrawing?
No.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll vote on it. Roll call vote.
Mike Lane?
Yeah, I'm sorry, no.
Dave McKenna?
No.
Glenn Maury?
No.
Arthur Robertson?
Yes.
Mike Sigler? Shawna Black?
No.
Amanda Champion?
No.
Deborah Dawson?
No.
Henry Granison? Henry Granison?
Everybody?
Yes.
Rich John?
No.
Dan Klein?
No.
Ann Corman?
Yes.
Leslie McBean-Cleaborne?
Yes.
Four i's. Nine no's.
All right, so that amendment fails. Back to the main motion. Are there any other amendments? Henry Granison?
Yes, there are also more amendments. I'd like to move them one at a time. The First Amendment goes in the laundry list of undertakings that we have. I'm not sure what the numbers are now. But it would read, "City and county, develop a comprehensive community building plan to address the community's direct involvement in every aspect of recommendations contained in this draft report, specifically including the hiring process of law enforcement and corrections offices."
Henry, the community what project?
Yeah, you broke up somewhere in the middle there, Henry, so it wasn't clear.
Oh, okay. Yeah, my internet's unstable. Let me, yes, "Develop a comprehensive community building plan to address the community's direct involvement in every aspect of the recommendations contained in the draft report, specifically including the hiring process of law enforcement and corrections offices." Can I be now?
Yes.
All right, did you get that? Is there a second?
I also emailed in today to Kathy and Michelle.
Okay. Is there a second for that? I don't know. Deb Dawson, are you seconding? Thank you. Discussion, Dan Klein?
I definitely support the first part of the recommendation, "Develop a comprehensive community building plan to address the community's direct involvement in every aspect of recommendations contained in the draft report." So far, so good. I don't exactly know what you mean by the last part, specifically including the hiring process of law enforcement and corrections officers. Can you say more about that part?
Yeah, during the, in Appendix Two, they discussed various things that the committee inputted, that the committee input. And one of the things was that the community would be involved in the hiring process. And so I thought that basically, like, the way we interview candidates for our departments, where we have the legislators sit in and give feedback over who should be hired, that again, that the community should have a role and that they should basically be involved in possibly interviewing or whatever in terms of the process of hiring new officers. Because again, part of the logic is that we want to get more community values in the process. And so, you know, when positions become open, you know, we can, we know that police are going to be hopefully looking for more diverse candidates and more enlightened candidates. But again, having a role for the, for the community would also help. I'm not saying they control the process, I'm just saying they're involved in the process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rich John?
I don't think I can support this proposal. First, it's presented as a county and city undertaking, and we can't commit the city. So I don't know how we would do that. I also share Dan's concern that it seems to be doing two different things. And before we agreed to the second part of it, I think we really need to get some advice from our HR department and about civil service and what's allowed. I don't know what we would be, how the public would be involved in what is typically a fairly confidential process of reviewing applications and hiring. There is confidential information disclosed. I don't, I don't know. I don't know what this means. So I'm uncomfortable supporting it at this point. Thanks.
Okay.
Well, can I address those, or do you want me to wait?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, one, we've already changed part of the thing, so the city will get what we passed tonight. And so the city can decide whether to do it or not. And the reports don't have to be, they don't have to be exactly the same. We've already said this. That's the point.
I'm having trouble hearing.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, let me turn off my, again, the part of the process is that, no, we can't commit the city, but we're not committing the city. This is the legislative voting vote. If you want me to remove N-City, I can certainly do that. But I just did it for ease and the city will be getting a copy of the resolution that will pass. And so they'll be able to, they'll be able to get it. In terms of the confidentiality, oh, we can require, we can require people to be confidential. We can have them sign a confidentiality agreement, saying you can't release any information during this, from this interview. And so I don't see that as a problem either.
Oh, boy. Thought there was one more. Martha?
Thank you. You know, we knew this was going to be a long meeting. I, as I said on the last one, I think we shouldn't be hung up on the city passing the exact same thing. If that had been the goal, we should have had a joint meeting. So it is what it is. We have many things to work out with the city. So I like the idea here. My question to you, Henry, is what is a community building plan? That, that language doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, it's really just a, it's just a plan to really just involve the community in the processes. I just chose community building plan just as a, just as a words. But we can change it to community oversight committee or community committee or whatever we want to do to, again, involve the community with every aspect of the, of this, of the final draft. Because again, I want it clearly stated that the committee, that the community is involved. Because again, the first, the first words of the executive summary talks about how executive order two or three that created a state mandate to examine and reconcile past experiences of marginalized populations who have experienced disproportionate contact with public safety system based upon national tragedies and unsolved, unresolved local issues. And that, and that really to me is the focus of this entire plan. And so I think that having the community involved and having it stated that the community is involved is, again, it's a standout point to me, that I just want to make sure the committee, this community is involved and that it's clearly stated. I know it's stated in the report, but again, we're not, we're not passing the report. We're passing resolutions, I want it in the resolution.
Okay. It would be clearer to me if we just said, "Develop a plan, develop a comprehensive plan to address and the rest of it." That's what you really want to do. And then the idea about involvement in hiring, you know, that could take any kind of, there are a lot of different ways you could do that. It could be people's, you know, looking at the job description. It could be, you know, who knows what? But it doesn't have to involve confidential information. But I think what you're saying is smart. I would, if it's so, if you wouldn't mind taking out community building, because that just confuses me. Is that all right?
Sure, that's a friendly amendment.
Thanks, okay.
Jason?
I have another question. And Henry, I think what you're at, what you're suggesting is that the community needs to be involved in every aspect of the implementation of these recommendations. Is that what you're?
Yes.
May I suggest that perhaps maybe that should be a resolved of some sort? In and of itself, it's how you're implementing recommendations. You want community involvement in that process. Just a thought that you may want to add it as a result after the recommendations, rather than a recommendation itself, because that is slightly different. It's in of itself about all the recommendations. The part about hiring practice is a specific recommendation in itself. Just my observation.
Okay. I'm open, I'm open to that, too. If we want to make it a specific resolved, that.
We lost you, Henry. We can't hear you.
It's trouble with that rural broadband.
So we can make it to a regular resolve?
Yeah, so you can make it to resolved. And remove the words "community building." Develop a comprehensive plan to address the community's direct involvement.
In every aspects of the implementation of the recommendations. Got it. Amanda, Shawna, Debra?
Yeah, I was, I was just confused by the community building as well. And I think maybe if it was hyphenated, "community building plan," that would have made more sense, channeling Julie Kiefer. But I think saying, I think what Jason is saying makes sense to make it a resolve, that it's a plan where the community is involved. That's all.
Yeah, and I think Henry's already moving there. Shawna and then Debra?
Yeah, just quick, I don't think it should be a problem inviting community members in for interviews. We do it often whenever we're hiring department heads. So I think this is a good resolved, Henry. Thank you.
Thank you. Debra?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I would be more comfortable without that last clause about specifically including the hiring process. I mean, first of all, you're saying you're going to involve the community in all aspects of implementation. And secondly, I think there are some questions about the nature and extent to which members of the public can be part of the hiring process. And I just wouldn't want to chain us to that. I would be more comfortable without that.
Okay. I'm willing to meet you.
So Henry, you're amending this to add a resolve? And can you read the result again? Be it further resolved that?
Develop a comprehensive plan to address the community's direct involvement in every aspect of implementing the recommendations contained in the draft report.
Thank you, Henry.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about the amendment? Vote on the amendment? I'm sorry?
Very quick question. Should we just name, should we name the draft report? Is it already referenced in?
I think it's referenced as draft report in the, in the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's vote on the amendment.
Mike Lane?
Yes.
Dave McKenna?
Yes.
Glenn Maury?
No.
Arthur Robertson?
Yes.
Mike Sigler?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Thank you. Shawna Black?
Yes.
Amanda Champion?
Yes.
Deborah Dawson?
Yes.
Henry Granison?
Yes.
Rich John?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Ann Corman?
Yes.
Leslie McBean-Cleaborne?
Yes.
Eleven i's, two no's.
And carries? Any other amendments?
Yes, my next amendment is, again, an item of undertakings. I guess I can limit, well, no, I'm going to keep it as county and city. And I want to develop a comprehensive community policing and outreach plan to connect law enforcement, law enforcement and residents. Again, looking at Appendix Two, and in fact, even when we went to the SWAT vehicle, the SWAT people said, well, boy, you know, we wish we could educate, tell the public about what we do. And again, we heard over and over again in Appendix Two from the community input that, that people don't know, you know, they don't know what the cops do, or they don't have a sense of what they do. And Derek, in fact, has, in his proposal, proposed a community outreach plan of community outreach workers that he would hire. And so I thought that, you know, also, we, also, community policing is also a, it's a buzzword. I know the city has done it, but it's really not in the report. And so I want, again, a comprehensive community policing report to have people involved more with the, with the, with the public.
Thank you for that. Henry, is there a second for that amendment?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike Lane? Discussion, Rich John?
Yeah, again, I am uncomfortable with the idea of us saying this is a city undertaking, because the city has not agreed to this. It was not in the draft report. This will be news to them at their meeting tomorrow night, and it seems presumptuous of us to say this is a city undertaking. I don't think we can do that. I'm also a little confused if you read Undertaking Seven, "Develop a comprehensive community healing plan to address trauma in the relationship between residents and law enforcement." The language is a little bit different, but this seems quite redundant. And again, we are at the eleventh hour. We are voting tonight, the city's voting tomorrow. We've been trying to align the two sets of undertakings to the extent we can. And we will be wordsmithing away from that alignment in doing this. I would, I'm reluctant to see us go there. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments on the amendment? Dan Klein?
Can you talk about community policing? I have some idea of what I think that means. And you referred to it as a buzzword. And you referred to it as a buzzword. So it'd be helpful to me if you get a little more, drill down a little bit of what you mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think what I understand it to mean is that community, that police actually, they, they walk a beat. They, they, they ride bicycles. They basically interact with the community more. In terms of the Camden Police Department, that was one of the things that, that was noted, was that they switched to a more community policing way. And so before, they said the cops were always in their cars. They never got out their cars. They just drove around and basically police that way. And this would basically require cops to in fact, get out of their cars and to do more. And I know that that's going to be difficult, you know, for the, for the county, because it's a much larger area. But to the extent they can do it, you know, I, I believe that it would be, it would be a benefit. Because again, in the community input, it talked about how, how they feel like the police are the other, because they're not, they're not part of them. They don't know them, they don't know them by name or anything else. And so again, I know that Ithaca Police had done community policing before, but I didn't see anything about it in the report. No enhancement of it, no continuation of it. Now, I know that they also, you know, basically lost some, lost some officers. Or the officers didn't, didn't meet their, their standards. And so like, they pulled away the police person on, on the commons. And so that was also community policing in theory. But again, if they, if they get more staff, maybe they can, they can, you know, bring it back. Or they could have more people assigned to community policing and not to sit in their cars all the time.
So, um, thank you for that. That, you, you did, you did hit on the point that, that makes me wonder a little bit about this, which is the county level, the sheriff's department. And I'm just brainstorming a little here. I don't want to, um, I don't want to rewrite your, your amendment. Would you consider something like, develop a outreach plan to connect law enforcement and residents, which may include community policing, something like that? Because I just, I'm just not really sure what it would look like. I'm a deputy.
Let me, let me think about it while we have the other comments. And I'll get back to you.
Sure, thank, thank you.
All right, Debra and Martha.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I really have difficulty supporting this simply because community policing works best in, in a city. We cannot bind the city. And I don't see how it's viable in the county with our very short-staffed road patrol and, and corrections officers. I just don't see how it's going to work. Thanks.
Thank you, Debra and Martha.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to figure out. I, I like the idea, I like the, you know, the specificity of it. To your point, Rich, the healing recommendation sounds like a, you know, is, is written up in, in the budget document as, as a one-time thing, a one-time, you know, initiative could be extended. And, and I think, I think that's kind of very specific to a certain kind of purpose. I think what Henry's doing is trying to say something different. So I, I will support this and figure out. I mean, it says community policing and outreach plan. So the community policing could be the city and outreach could be the sheriff. I, I, I think we, I'm going to support this because I think the, the idea behind it is, is good and worth putting in here.
Thank you.
I re, I rethought it, and yes, I, I'm open to Dan's, Dan's suggestion. Because yes, community policing is going to be tough for the people in, for the police in the county. But again, the outreach plan was really from, 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 from Derek's office in terms of his idea. And so I will, what, what was your language, Dan?
Can you read it again, Dan?
Yes, develop a comprehensive community, sorry, develop a comprehensive outreach plan to connect law enforcement and residents, which may include community police.
Okay.
Shawna.
I, I would be curious, because I know this is something that Derek has done in the past and something that I, I believe, what, a budget or two ago, we actually hired two deputies to do more community policing. So I, you know, my thought is that he would probably be in support of this. But I'd love to hear from, from the sheriff and, or the undersheriff.
Yeah, thanks Shawna. Yeah, again, this is something I ran on and something we've already been doing. Community engagement's a big thing for us. We asked for more staffing a couple of years ago. You did give us one position. We created another one out of overtime savings. But then we fell into COVID and we weren't able to fill positions for a long time. So they haven't been utilized. But there are ways that county, at the county level, you can engage the community. And we've been doing that. We attend every single community event we possibly can. We've created a bicycle patrol that'll be starting this, uh, spring. Again, that was funding for that was cut out of our budget, actually. And we had to get that from an outside party, the same party that funded the SWAT mobile. And, uh, you know, we've increased our marine patrol. We've got people back out on the water during the summer times merely for engaging our community. We're continuing our cops, kids and toys. That's community engagement. We deliver Easter baskets to the homeless children every Easter. And we'll be doing it again this week. So there's a myriad of ways we can do that. And all our deputies are involved in that. And one of the biggest ones I will mention again is our engagement of our children in our schools. We made 111 visits and less our community, uh, school members prior to COVID. So yeah, it can be done. It is being done. And I would support anything that would give us the ability to further increase those efforts.
So one more thing, Madam Chair, is that if we end up passing this resolution, we should also amend recommendation number seven to include the same language.
Why would you do that?
Let me make sure. So that it, I mean, it's basically saying the same thing, but it would add to, add to the strength of recommendation seven.
It's not saying the same thing to me, but I'll defer. Henry, you look like you want to say something.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I, I know, I've talked about people, the trauma issue. I see trauma as, as going in the past, dealing with past events and trying to, trying to heal that. Outreach, for me, is trying to go forward and trying to reach out and educate people about what they, what they, what they do. Like, again, education about the, about the SWAT vehicle, what the SWAT vehicle does and everything else, if we, if we have a SWAT vehicle. But again, to, to educate people about what, what police are doing. I don't see that, I see the healing process, the trauma process as something different. I see those, uh, those be run by, I assume psychiatrists or psychologists and everything else to really get into the feeling.
Can't hear you. We can't hear you.
I just want to educate.
Yeah. I'm definitely willing to support this, Henry. I just, I wanted to bring up that you might want to put it in number seven. But if there's no, I'm fine with not doing that too. That's fine.
Thank you. Anne Foreman, and then Mike Lane.
Sorry, uh, so just to first to follow up on what, uh, legislators Black and Granison were just talking about. I, I, I do agree with, uh, Henry regarding the, there are two separate issues. So, uh, the other thing I just wanted to mention too, a lot of times, I, I like this resolution because partly it gives credit to the sheriff's department for what's already, they're already doing and puts it in writing. Because, you know, we can't always, well, we, we can't count on what's going to be happening, you know, in, in the future. You know, with it, because it's an elected position, the sheriff. So this kind of puts it in, in, solidifies it a little bit more that this is what the county and the sheriff's department intends to do going forward. I just also wanted to mention that another part of outreach was to spend the, the time and money to, um, that the sheriff's department and the county did to, uh, reach out and set up, um, a mobile office in Enfield. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mike Lane.
Yes, the sheriff said it better than I could about the things that the sheriff's office does. Community policing is different in urbanized areas than it is in rural areas. But it's community policing in both instances. And I think we need more of it. We need to keep trying. And we need to let our police departments and, uh, and, and, and leaders know that we want them to innovate about these kinds of things. And I think if we ask them to do it, they will do it.
Thank you. Dan Klein.
Well, I have been educated about community policing and what it is we're actually doing at the county level. Henry, I have absolutely no objection. If you'd like to go back to your original language to make it stronger statement. I, now I, I understand more.
Thank you, Dan. Annie, can you hand up again?
Yeah, I just wanted to pass on, um, some comments from Reggie Teasley that she sent to me that before the introduction of cars for all police, even the sheriff and deputies worked closely with communities and rural residents. And that community connection is crucial for getting people to report crime. So I, I agree with that. I mean, she's certainly an expert on it. But, you know, for people to have a better, uh, better trust, better relationship, you know, with, with the officers and the deputies, I think is, is crucial. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Deanna, you hit your hand up, but then it's down. Did you want to weigh in on something as part of one of the leaders of this process?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify in case there were questions. There is a distinct difference between the healing plan and what, what I perceive as being asked here on this evening. The healing plan is about very creating very, very safe spaces. It's, it's not going to be you go bring the truck out and people get inside of this. This is about building trust. This is about the folks who won't talk to us today. All the community engagement bits we're talking about now won't do any of those things. We need to rebuild trust with folks. We're not speaking, I can't speak to, you know, I'm new to this organization. But what I can say is the data has told us that there are folks that we need to bring into having a different experience with government. So that I just wanted to clarify how they are to, the intent behind both of them are different. I, I, I support the, the sheriff and undersheriff in continuing to build relationship with the community. But I would also reinforce as Chief Equity Diversity Officer, how we target minoritized groups in the work. And that's, I, I haven't been here for any of those other events. And I'm assuming that they're doing the same. But as we think about this, how do we make sure that our LGBTQIA folks, how do we ensure our veterans folks, how do we ensure that our people of color are at the heart? And when we think about this particular recommendation, I'm not saying take away any of the other things. I'm just speaking to what the target of Executive Order 203. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Henry.
I would like to ask, I'd like to ask Derek whether he thinks that community policing should be, should be a, a, a sort of afterthought, whether it should be prominent in the, in the amendment? Whether they can do community policing as a county sheriff's office?
Henry, I think it absolutely should be prominent in our actions. And it has been. Again, that's the whole thing I ran on. And that's what we've been doing for two years. So yes, it's a very prominent thing. It's important to me. It's important to our community. But again, we have three to four deputies on the road. So we do the best we can. When we create our bike patrol, it's going to actually be down to where the people in the cars are going to be wearing bike patrol outfits with a bike strapped on the back of the car with a carrier. And they're going to be on their normal patrol. And when they can, they'll get out and they'll ride their bikes. We're going to try to get some of the trail areas in and the parks and things of that nature. So again, we're adapting and we're trying to do the best we can with what we got and come up with creative ways to make it happen.
Thank you, Sheriff. Undersheriff, Jen?
Oh, yeah, I, I just want to speak about community policing a little bit. I, I think it's important to realize a lot of what came out of, uh, the report was a call for more community engagement, but meaningful community engagement, not just going to barbecues or events. And I'm in full agreement with that. And that is something that Derek and I have taken seriously. But I would, I would urge you guys to just look again at our response to the recommendations and see how we tried to integrate community engagement and all of our thoughts on that, be it with the professional standards and community relations division that we would like to create, or the co-response, uh, model to crisis response. Community engagement, community policing is more than just going to barbecues or having, uh, kids get on the SWAT truck. But it is difficult when deputies are running from call to call. You know, they need more time to have meaningful engagement with the community. Thank you.
And I appreciate your comments. But I will say that part of community engagement is having kids go on the SWAT truck. It does have those kids not be. And I know some of those children who've been on SWAT trucks, on the SWAT truck, who have decided that they want to become part of law enforcement because they thought that was the needed experience. There are all kinds of levels of community engagement.
No, I, I'm in agreement. I just was saying that a lot of the comments made in the recommendation or the focus groups was that they want, to them, that they want more meaningful engagement than just those sporadic visitations.
Got it. So one of the things that, go ahead, Henry.
I also, based on the sheriff's comments, go back to my original amendment of having community policing and outreach in the same, in the, in the same sentence and not having it as a dependent clause. So it would read, develop a comprehensive community policing and outreach plan to connect law enforcement and residents.
And Henry, what are you doing with this? Are you making it another recommendation, like recommendation 18? Are you creating a new resolved?
I'm, I'm just making it a, like, recommendation 18. It doesn't need to be resolved.
Okay.
It's county and city.
Pardon?
County and city.
Yes, because I believe the county, I believe the, the city should also do these things. And if they don't, they can vote it down and not have to worry about it. And these, you know.
Okay. Rich John?
Again, I, I don't want to sound repetitive, but we worked with the city and we determined what recommendations were joint. If they're joint, we're saying we're both doing them. If we put it in ours that the city is doing this, I don't think we have the authority to tell them this. We might like them to do it, but we haven't asked them. You know, again, this, this process has been going on for a very long time. It really would have been helpful, Henry, if this had been shared with the city a long time ago so that they could weigh in and determine they wanted to go along with us on this. I don't, I don't think it's our place to tell the city. If, if it's just a county recommendation and we're committed to not worrying about alignment on it with the city, we can put it in as an additional undertaking. And, you know, that's on us. But I don't think we can commit them. And if, if it's a joint, if it's going to be shown as a joint recommendation, I, I'm going to vote against.
Henry, are you willing to make this a recommendation that's for county? Law enforcement? It's a question.
Yes, I, I know it's a question. I'm thinking about my answer. Fine, we can, we can make it a county only. But since Savante's here, and I assume we'll be sending over a resolution, we can ask Seid to look at.
Sounds like a plan. Sounds like a plan. No pressure. Martha?
No.
So, Henry, you just said yes to taking city off of there?
Yes.
All right.
I know.
I, this is ridiculous. This is ridiculous. We get to say what we want. All right, never mind. I think it needs to be joint. I think the city needs to do this every, we don't get to tell them what to do anymore than they get to tell us.
We can ask the city to entertain a similar recommendation.
Yes, I'd like it to be noted for the record that we request the city to adopt it.
Right.
That's fine.
Yes, sir.
Should we consider putting that right into the amendment? And we request the city consider adopting similar proposals?
No.
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 All right.
Thank you. All right, let's vote on this amendment, please.
Mike Lane?
Yes.
Dave McKenna? Glenn Maury?
No.
Martha Robertson?
Yes.
Mike Sigler?
No.
Shawna Black?
Yes.
Amanda Champion?
Yes.
Deborah Dawson?
Yes.
Henry Grandison?
Yes.
Rich John?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Ann Corman?
Yes.
Leslyn McBean Claiborne?
Yes.
Ten eyes, three noes.
Thank you. Are there any other recommendations to the motion, to the resolution on the floor?
Yes, I have a third one.
Go ahead, Henry.
Which I'm going to, it's another undertaking, it will be county only. Evaluate the requirement that law enforcement reside within the area which they serve.
Henry, can you, are you raising your hand a second, Martha? Thank you. Henry, can you please repeat that for me?
Yeah, evaluate the requirement that law enforcement reside within the area that they serve.
Thank you. Discussion.
It's really just the issue of looking at whether we can do something with a residency requirement. I know we passed the law a number of years ago, but this is, we're reimagining things. In fact, the community input, which again, we don't know whether it was local or whether it was county, said that, you know, perhaps police should reside in the area where they where they work. I just want to evaluate it, not guarantee it, not do anything, just want to look into it.
Thank you. Mike Lane.
This one, I'm not going to be able to support, Henry, because in my experience with police, but going back to when I was mayor of Dryden and other places, it's very difficult often for police officers and their families to live in the, right in the neighborhood of where they're policing because of things that could happen with their family. The idea is wonderful, but things do happen. We had a police officer in Etna whose house was burned down. Thank God the family was not there, but those kinds of things are frightening for the families of police officers who will always worry whether, when their police officer, woman or man goes out, is that person going to come home that night to the family? I think where they choose to live ought to be, we ought to respect that.
Thank you, Mike. Martha Robertson.
Thank you, and I really appreciate this, all this thinking, Henry. Henry and I talked about this a little bit. I think it's really critical, and Mike, Mike Lane, I understand a small village is much harder for a village's police force. It might even be tougher for the city, but we're a pretty big county. And it does, it really does make a lot of difference in this case in terms of the people's appreciation of that those officers are part of the community. I understand that mandates are really, really tough, but maybe there's some carrots instead of sticks. So I think this is a good way to frame it, to say that, you know, we're going to look at this, see if there are places where it's worked. I know the city experimented briefly with something on West Hill. I think that might have been, like, too narrow, a request for where people would live. So I like the idea of evaluating this. I think it could be a real tool to improve diversity and improve connection to the community. So, Henry, thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you, Martha. May I remind you all that this is just an evaluate. Shawna Black, and then Mike Sigler.
Yeah, I am, I will support this, but I do have a question for Derek, or the sheriff, as far as what we continue to hear is that it is nearly impossible to hire good deputies, and the recruiting is really, really hard with all the civil service and the physicals and everything like that. I just wanted to ask, how many of your deputies would be disqualified if we put restrictions on them?
A lot of them would be. In fact, most of them. Most of them do live outside the county, because let's face it, this county is a very expensive county to reside in. So, yeah, a lot of them come from neighboring counties. And as far as hiring goes, we've lost probably five, six deputies in the last several months to retirements or just flat out leaving, and we have no lateral applicants at this point. So our hiring is already extremely difficult, is it is?
Thank you. Mike Sigler.
And I like what Mike said, I mean, obviously, just listening to what Derek said. I mean, we've had this issue actually in other departments, too. I mean, I don't particularly mind an evaluation, I suppose, but, I mean, when we try to hire people for even department head, we've had to make exceptions, and we've built that into administration, whereas administration can override that requirement. I guess that would be part of the evaluation process, but I'm not sure that's true. But, I mean, that's my two cents on it. I mean, if you want the best people, you know, if somebody's in Cortland and their kids are in school, I can't imagine they're going to pull their kids out of school and maybe bring them someplace else, but maybe they will.
Thank you, Mike. Rich, and then Martha.
Yeah, I think I'm inclined not to support this. Not that it couldn't bear evaluation at some point. It was never considered in the draft report. It's new as of 3:00 this afternoon for our consideration. We haven't had a chance to talk with the city about it, even though I understand it's now considered just a county issue. It does seem to be going in a different direction from number 10 of our undertakings. And that one reads, "Develop a comprehensive, inclusive, and innovative recruitment and retention strategy for law enforcement and corrections officers." We're trying to cast a very broad net, and this would narrow it. I don't know if that's a good idea or not. I just don't think I want to make a decision on whether we should enter into evaluating it and spending a lot of time on it tonight, you know, without any prior consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Rich. Martha, go ahead.
That's why the verb is evaluate. So I heard, oh, I read over and over again in the appendices, for example, about the lack of community connection. And, you know, you're just going to see that we're never going to get past that if we don't try or look for other tools. What if, for example, we, you know, I'm making this up, but, you know, free housing or free down payment for somebody who moves into the county? This doesn't mean, you know, I don't, you know, the intention is certainly not as restrictive as just a requirement. And I think, I just think that the community wants to see us take these things seriously, and this is a, this is a serious issue. I thought I did read somewhere that it was discussed in the report. Anyway, I don't think, I think we're here to use our own brains. We don't have to only consider what's in the report. I really think this is a smart thing to take a look at, and I would urge people to vote for it.
All right, Ann Corman, and then Henry, it's yours, so you give the last word on it.
Thanks, Madam Chair. It sounds like the end goal here would, that people, that some people are talking about for this amendment would be to have people that are working in the Sheriff's Department that have more of a connection to this community, and there might be various ways to do that. I don't really want to get into brainstorming it, but, you know, a few things come to mind. I will just mention one way to do that, not just the people who are already working there to get them possibly more connected with the community, but is to, we might look at how can we get more people locally that already live here to do all, you know, to get more involved in law enforcement and whatever those steps are, because I don't even know what they are. So maybe that would be the way to go. Thank you.
Well, Henry, I thought you had the last word, but then I see Martha and Deborah are up.
Yeah, I mean, my basic analysis is, look, it's an evaluation, you know, the CJC will have time to look at this. And so I don't see this as being something that would take up a whole lot of time. It would just be looking at things and just deciding, or just basically bringing it back to the legislature to see whether we like it or not. And so, you know, but again, it's a balance between whether or not you want to have people connected to the community, or whether you want to broaden the scope. I think that, you know, on balance, maybe, again, we can evaluate those two judgments and make a decision.
Thank you. Deborah, and then Martha.
I just wanted to call the question.
I have an alternative language that I think might be more appealing.
Question called.
Second.
There was a second.
Amanda.
Are you allowing for Martha to have alternative language? Question callers.
I'm sorry, we have just done this thing to death. It's not a Christmas tree. I'm not inclined to talk about it any further. I'm not going to vote for it.
The question has been called. Vote and call the question.
Mike Lane?
Yes.
Dave McKenna?
Yes.
Glenn Maury?
Yes.
Martha Robertson?
No.
Mike Sigler?
No.
Shawna Black?
No.
Amanda Champion?
Yes.
Deborah Dawson?
Are we calling the question or voting on the?
Yes, I'm calling the question.
Yes.
Henry Grandison?
No.
Rich John?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
No.
Ann Corman?
No.
Leslyn McBean, Leslyn McBean Claiborne?
Yes.
Seven eyes, six noes. Motion fails.
That fails. Martha Robertson.
So I just, I just looked at, looked at what you've got there, and you do say requirement. I would suggest something like evaluate possible tools to encourage that law enforcement reside within the area they serve, rather than the language of requirement. So evaluate possible tools to encourage law enforcement to reside within the area that they serve. So that's, if, if that's friendly, Henry, that's what I.
That's fine with me.
What's your original language? Because that might lose my vote.
The original language is, evaluate the requirement that law enforcement reside within the area that they serve.
Thank you.
Can you read the new language, please, again?
Evaluate possible tools to encourage law enforcement to reside within the area that they serve.
So are you making an amendment to the amendment there, Martha?
Well, Henry said it was okay, if that's friendly. I can't remember who seconded it.
Martha seconded.
I did?
Yes.
Okay.
If it's friendly to the both of you, okay?
Yep.
Further discussion on that?
Just a point of order, if I could.
Yes.
That a friendly amendment, if anyone objects to the friendly amendment, you still have to vote on it. So it's okay that it's friendly to them, but if anybody else still wants to vote on it, just reminding you of the rules.
Well, we obviously still have to vote on whether.
Still have to vote on it. So vote on the amendment.
Mike Lane?
The amendment to the amendment, right?
No, it's the. This is the amendment, because it was friendly and there were no objections, so vote.
Mike Lane?
No.
Dave McKenna?
No.
Glenn Maury?
No.
Martha Robertson?
Yes.
Mike Sigler?
No.
Shawna Black?
No.
Can't hear you.
No.
Okay.
Amanda Champion?
No.
Deborah Dawson?
No.
Henry Grandison?
Yes.
Rich John?
No.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Ann Corman?
Yes.
Leslyn McBean Claiborne?
No.
We have four eyes, nine noes.
Fails.
No, that's not right. Is it?
What did I say?
Nine and four.
That's correct.
Oh, sorry.
Four eyes, nine noes.
Okay.
All right, get your cereal bar, Shawna. This time tonight, we're all fading. Any other amendments? So the motion has been amended. Now we're on to the main motion. Martha Robertson.
So it's a question of these things that, I guess, is there anything that we did, we did adopt the one about community policing? Was there anything else added that we would like to ask the city to evaluate? Was that the only one?
Direct community involvement.
I think that was the only one. There was community involvement and community policing.
Right. Okay, so my question is, how do we, do we include that in this, or how do we include that? How do we send that to the city?
I anticipate Jason will be communicating with the city in the morning, and I'm happy to assist with that, Jason, if you'd like.
We'll share our adopted resolution with the city.
Yeah, what I would ask for is, once it's, whatever, if you adopt a resolution tonight, I'll have Kathy send me a copy of the strike line version, as well as a clean copy, and then I'll forward it over to the Chief of Staff and the mayor.
I have another question, just how does the report itself, like, once we, if someone passes this, does this stop being a draft report? And is then, like, there's, like, there's a thing about timeline at the end of it, about that there'll be a letter from you and Savante. What happens to the report?
Well, we would take the report, and we would take the resolution, and we would forward it to the Budget Office. forward it to the Budget Office.
Do you do a different letter, like it says here on the?
Yeah, we would draft a letter, yes. I know Dominic has just done some formatting on it, but we would do, we would do a letter, and then we would take, we would take a certified resolution from, like Kathy would give us, and then we would send it to the state Budget Office.
You take draft off of all of it?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Martha. Thank you for the response, Jason and Rich. Anything else?
No, just thank you to everybody for a very robust debate. Certainly, in some sense, I think we have to say, be careful what you wish for. We're, we're really going to have a very active year at public safety. There's a tremendous amount of work to do, and it's good. It's going to be hard. I think we're going to continue to have difficult conversations, but that's, that's a good thing. We're going to, we're going to undertake this. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Rich. You pulled some of the words.
Sorry. I'm assuming we're going to pass it.
You pulled some of the words out of my mouth. I repeat, what I've been saying over and over again is asking all of us, as we continue this process, to keep Executive Order 203 in mind and a reason for it, and to continue to ask ourselves, how is this centering and responding to what has been happening historically to people of color in relation to policing? How is any of it making it better? How is it working to dismantle some of the systemically racist structures and policies that have been in place that would lead to the killings of many people of color? And we continue to keep those things in mind. This has been, as Rich said, a very long and involved process. Lots of people, and I do want to take a moment to shout out Deanna and Shelley for leading this process through, from city and county level. Deanna, fresh and brand new to the county and getting tossed in there, and taking the bull by the horns and running with it. Shelley Michelle Non from the city, of course, Mayor Savante Myrick, Jason Malino, Dominic, and a host of other folks who have been involved, our sheriff, our chief of police, our undersheriff, all the law enforcement folks who, even in recent days, have taken a moment to look again at the recommendations and to look at it through different lens and different eyes, so that we are working on shared values, as opposed to what our difference is. There's been a lot of work from law enforcement at the city level. I appreciate some of that. None of these things really completely and comprehensively fixes what's been going on, fix what have been, what's been going on, but they are all a step in the right direction. And from someone sitting here as a person of color with lived experience, it is very much appreciated that we're taking this step and we're being serious about it, and not saying to our community, one more time, we're doing all these studies, they're just going to go on the back burner somewhere. Yes, officers in all our units, Sheriff's Department, Police Department, UGHS Department, wherever, they've all been doing some good work, many of them moving towards this and some of the things they've been doing. But we still continue to have problems, and we need to recognize that. For me, I was going to bring a resolve, and then I decided not to, because I hope that the sentiment and the commitment is real, that these are just recommendations that will inform major policy changes, because without policy change, we're not going anywhere. You can have all the recommendations we want to have. These recommendations have to inform comprehensive policy change, and even some of the discussion tonight pointed to that. So I do want to appreciate their work as much as possible, and I especially want to appreciate those in law enforcement, because a lot of it has been focused on law enforcement. But we know that the problems are not only at law enforcement, it's public safety in general. Public safety when it comes to people who are experiencing homelessness. Public safety when it comes to people who are living in the conditions of poverty. How are we addressing those? Unemployment issues, so much more that's involved in it. So I just want to take the time again just to say thank you for everyone for working on this. Hopefully, we'll be able to pass this so that we can send our recommendations to the Governor. Several community members have stopped me to talk about this, and I want to assure the community that this is not the end of it. As people have said, there wasn't enough time for community to have conversation. And it's good to have added in there that what we're looking for is for community to be involved in all aspects of the implementation. I want to make sure that it's clear and it's understood, that it's community, that it is staff with the content knowledge who would be involved, that it's elected leaders who would be involved, that it will be an inclusive process as we work on implementing these recommendations and more that are going to come up. So thank you again. Mike Sigler.
I'm guessing we're at the, are we at the debate stage of all this? I'm assuming we are, right? All right, so, um, Leslyn, I loved a lot of the things you said. I mean, if, if I were looking at this plan, and there's about, you know, eighty percent of the things I can agree with. I don't agree that they're all a step in the right direction, however. You know, listen, if you were to take a poll, every single poll I ever see, public safety is the number one issue that people talk about, that and roads. I, I don't know why roads is always in there, but public safety, roads. So my county legislator job is just part of my job. My other job is sales. I never thought I'd go into sales. I didn't think I'd be particularly good at it, and yet here I am, twenty years later, so I'm apparently pretty decent at it. I tell people that, you know, your, your sale is made pretty much in the first three seconds. You know, people judge you three seconds, that's what you have. And from there, it's all confirmation past that. And I simply am having trouble getting past the rollout of this, of the plan. Listen, I, I get it, people have apologized, and people have done whatever. I just, that kind of killed it all for me. And I, and I appreciate, there's some really good things in this plan, but the fact that that, just so little consideration for the people that work at these departments with the rollout, I, I just don't know what to make of that. And I'm sorry, listen, I, I was only talking about Riviera because it was in the paper, and now it's on Channel 9 News. And it's a problem. Listen, listen, I believe in second chances. I believe that people, when they get out of prison, they can make something of their lives. But this man shot a police officer in the face. I, I don't know what to say to that. Like, if you didn't think that that would, would harm the relationship with police, I, I don't know why you wouldn't have thought that. That's the, the problem I'm having. I mean, Robert Walsh, police officer, just doing his duty, tries to stop a robbery, gets shot, is on the floor helpless, and Mr. Rivera goes and executes him. I, I don't know how that goes away, frankly. It, it's not like we're talking prison reform. I could, I could understand that maybe, but no, I mean, he's, he's been out two years, and has he been great on homeless issues? Yes, right? I, I appreciate that, and that's the second chance, not let's go and put him in, like, on a board for police reform, when you know you've got to have police buy-in. I mean, none of this really happens without police buy-in, and frankly, the police don't feel like they've been involved. And I keep trying to hammer this home to everybody, and I, I don't know if it's not taking, if people don't believe me. Like, we were talking about union busting. That's what the police were talking about. They believe the IPD that this was a union busting tactic. And people said, no, it's not. It's not a union busting tactic. Well, guess what? You know, teachers' union think it was, IBW thinks it was, the black trade unionists thinks it was. So does the AFL-CIO. I mean, I'm not talking like small unions here, these are big players. So either they're wrong and have misunderstood this, or no, they're looking at this and going, no, I, I think we understand this pretty well, that we know what's going on. So that's the part I, I guess I'm, I'm not understanding. Executive Order 203, yes, said we must list the marginalized voices, but it didn't say we're not going to listen to the police, too. It didn't say we're going to just listen to those marginalized voices exclusively. And I'm telling you, the police feel, like, basically that's what's been done, that they have not been heard. I mean, if we want to rebuild trust, right? I think one of the major things that police do is solve crime. I would effort more towards that. I haven't heard that talked about at all. I haven't taught, I haven't heard us really talk about the victims of the crimes, and how we have outstanding cases in the IPD for a number of sex crimes that I, I'm curious, yeah, what happened to that? Like, what happened to all those cases? I mean, I think that's where you build trust. And I'm sorry, there are communities within Tompkins County that don't want to share information because they know the police can't protect them. They need protection from certain elements of, of, of their community, and they know the police can't do it, so why go to the police? Because they're going to get harmed. I mean, the old adage, snitches and ditches didn't come from nowhere, it came from somewhere. So I think, yes, we do need to work on that police. And you know what the police know it, too? The police union has come out with a plan, the Sheriff's Department came out with a draft plan, and they were both plans based on what our solution people came up with. It wasn't like they just pulled it out of nowhere. They drew directly from the, the draft plan that we had, and they said, listen, we can make parts of this work, here's what we're thinking. And I don't know, we'll see, I guess, if we're talking about that, but we're up against a deadline now, and it doesn't seem like we're going to. And again, they're going to say, yeah, you know, you didn't really listen to us. So that's about it. I, I don't know what to tell you. I, rollout was important. It's a sales thing. Joe Biden is going around trying to sell his plan, right? It's the same idea. And we, I don't think, have sold this to the people that are going to be putting it in place. So thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Oh, boy. Mike Lane?
Yeah, I have commented on the, the, the motion that's on the table, which is the whole resolution. I think I want to do that, because I don't think a lot of us are really happy about why we got here, about how we got here. I don't think a lot of us are happy that there was an executive order that said to us, if you don't do this, if you don't do this, we're going to take away your state funding. And so what does the county, as the poor relation of New York State, have to do? We've been hurt very badly for sales tax and, and, and other things that we've had money taken away from us. So we say, all right, we will come up with a plan. And in true Tompkins County fashion, we don't do it by hands, we talk it out. You know, we don't have a county executive, and the reason we don't is because we don't want to leave it to the county executive. We leave it to the legislators. We have, we don't have a council administrator form of government like the beginning of this plan says. That's not our government. It is the county legislature that hires an administrator to help us do the day-to-day activities. But we talk things out. I mean, just look at how Rich has led us through meeting after meeting about this. And there are a lot of meetings I haven't had a chance to attend, but I know how it's been talked out. I know, I've read the emails, I've read the, the report, I've read the, the, the bad, the bad feelings that some people have, but I know that we are in an era in this country that we have to pay attention to what's going out, out there. It's part of COVID, it really is. It's because people are home and frustrated. And so other issues bubble up and, and come forward, and, and that's just the way it happens, you know? Maybe we don't like it, maybe we'd like to have one crisis at a time, but it doesn't always work that way. We're here to, to, to go forward with this resolution tonight, I'm going to support it. I looked through the recommendations, county and city. I, I wasn't happy with the rollout of the, of the draft report, as I spoke about last time. I don't think, I think that was a very, very poor way of rolling it out. But read the, read the language, read the verbs that are used here. This is a starting point. It is a starting point. It isn't saying all of this is going to happen tomorrow. This says, let's reimagine something. And I take that word from the, from the Governor's, Governor's executive order, let's reimagine it, let's try something, let's talk about it. And, and yeah, maybe there have been other things in the past that have not worked, and there are things here that are not going to work, but it's not going to be for lack of trying. So I think this is one more good example of why the Tompkins County Legislature is such a terrific form of government in Tompkins County, and this is a, a good example of how we work together to try to, to come up with the best solution to something that's been presented to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Nicely said. Deborah Dawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I mean, we've all been moaning and groaning about the short timeline, you know, the, the way the city rolled out its recommendation number one, blah, 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 blah. We've been doing that now for weeks. We've also been meeting. We've, you know, we've hammered this out. We're not voting on the city's recommendation number one. We're also not now voting on the recommendation regarding vehicle 99, because we can't agree on that. I would remind Mr. Sigler that the report and the recommendations are not Mr. Rivera's report, they're not Mr. Rivera's recommendations. As I understand the process, Mr. Rivera's involvement was limited to getting buy-in from a community he's uniquely qualified to communicate with, to get them to come and participate in this process, which they do not trust, and with good historical reason. I don't love every recommendation in this report, but I have to realize that as a white woman who spent a career in, in law and regulatory enforcement, my views on policing are understandably quite a bit different from the views of a person of color or in, a member of the LGBTQ community whose interactions with law enforcement have really sucked. So with respect to all the work that's been put into this by so many people, with respect to our sheriff and undersheriff who are here supporting this effort, with respect, you know, to all of my colleagues, including you, Mike, who've put in hours and hours, you know, debating this and trying to come up with a product that we can all agree to, we don't necessarily all love it, and you may decide to vote against it, that's your prerogative, but don't blame that on Mr. Rivera. And I think I'm done. So I'll be voting yes on this much amended and much word-crafted resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Martha?
Thank you, Leslyn, and my deep thanks to everybody who put in their time, blood, sweat, and tears, I will say, on this report, especially including the community members who, who really went out of their comfort zones. And Mike Sigler? And Mike Sigler, I guess you didn't read one of the appendices and maybe Belisa Gonzalez can talk about it. But this is the list of law enforcement focus groups. Union law enforcement, Tompkins County Sheriff Office Officers, Tompkins County Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office Sergeants and above. Ethical Police Department Officers, Ethical Police Department Sergeants and above. Assistant District Attorney and Public Defenders. That's page four of, I think it's Appendix C. They, if they felt they weren't heard, they weren't paying attention. Or maybe they, I don't know. I, the documents I read seemed to say that they had quite a bit of opportunity. I understand that if they didn't like what the con, the results of the report were, they would, they would say that they didn't feel heard. But they were asked. They were solicited. And I think they are, the officers are extremely important to making this work. But golly, jeez, if this were easy, we wouldn't be here. If this were easy, we wouldn't have these problems. So I, you know, I know that the government was pretty heavy-handed in, in making this happen. But look, it really forced our hand and every other county in the state to face these issues. And the people who say there hasn't been enough time to talk about it. I, there are at least as many people who say we're already too late in taking action. That we should have been doing this years and years ago. And I would really encourage you to read something that Lance Salisbury sent like 3:30 today. So I understand if you didn't get to it. But I, I, there's, there's a lot of detailed perspective in there. In particular, on sort of the origins of the distrust in our community. It's not just that people in our community hear about police abuse in other communities. There's a history here. And it's really important that that voice be heard. And it maybe has taken this much, you know, it takes this kind of effort so that people will come out and say how they feel. And I, it's, you know, we're years too late in dealing with this. And we need to take these kind of steps. We need to put real money behind this. And if we feel like, oh my gosh, we have this pandemic to deal with, or we have climate change to deal with, this is every bit as urgent as those things as well. So I appreciate the focus that this has created in our body. And I'm looking forward to participating in any way that I can in supporting this effort. And I think we have a really good start. And I hope we maintain that goodwill and, and that honesty to move forward.
Henry Granison.
Yes, just a second. I want to address some of what Mike was saying about the lack of law enforcement in the process because I was on the law enforcement committee with the chief police and the sheriffs. They were there every meeting. They had input. Just like I had input. It's like Rich John had input. And again, they were the focus groups. They had input. Now, we did not, now, they didn't ask us what we wanted to see in the report. But they did take us, but they, they were there to listen to us and, and, and write down notes about what we said and how we felt about things. So I don't really, and in fact, you even said that the, that the police and evidence association and the sheriffs, in fact, did reports to us afterwards. So they had input that way too. So I don't understand this not input process. But I also want to talk about the report itself. I was on the fence about whether I was going to support the report. I will support the report because I think on total, on balance, it's affordable. I want to, I want to basically be behind it. But I know in the, the definition of, of reimagining, it talked about innovation, creative innovation. I looked at the recommendations. I don't really see much creative innovation. I see us deciding whether or not to have a SWAT unit. That's not creative. I see us having a, you know, doing data collection. That's not creative innovation either. In fact, I mean, except for the rollout, I thought the most thing that was innovative was the public safety force. No recommendation number one that the city dealt with. But again, you know, we didn't, we didn't vote on that. And that's not what we, that's not what we concerned about. But again, also public safety. The public safety talked about criminal justice. And I remember talking to someone in the law enforcement committee, talking about public safety. And we named it the Reimagining Public Safety as opposed to Reimagining Police Reform Report. But I also know that in the resolution that we have, it talks about that we were not able to do everything that we wanted to do in terms of looking at housing, in terms of looking at unemployment, in terms of all the things that Leslan mentioned in her, in her, in her talk, her speech. And so, you know, so I said, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll wait. I'll wait to see what happens in the future. But, you know, but again, not everybody's happy with the report. But the question is whether you have, whether you're happy enough with the report. And I am. That's it.
Thank you. Anna Corman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of, I, I believe the majority of the legislature, I want to sincerely apologize to Mr. Rivera for my colleagues' disparaging comments. On this resolution that we are doing tonight is, it is, it's a huge step in the right direction. And as others have said, and at least we're taking a step. And that, that gives me hope because if we're spending, so one thing that the government, the governor is forcing our hand at doing this quicker than we would like, it's, it's making us move forward. So for that, I, I'm glad and I'm grateful. I also just wanted to, as people see from my background here, just trying to help remind folks why we're, why we're here tonight. And I appreciate the reminder from many members of our community. And I also just wanted to say a couple of names. Again, to remind us why we're here, a couple of names of people who were killed, who were unarmed, who were killed by law enforcement. Richard Brooks, 27, who fell asleep in his car. Daniel Prude, 41, who had run into the street naked while experiencing a mental health episode. George Floyd, age 46, who tried to use a counterfeit $20 bill. And Brianna Taylor, who was asleep at home. She was 26 years old. And I could go on, but the last one I want to mention is Tatiana Jefferson, who was 28 years old, who was at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Dan Klein.
We all know that the recommendation to stand and reform the Ethical Police Department got a lot of attention and took up all the oxygen in the room, maybe is the way to say it. And, you know, as I've talked to people, I realized, I found out that people really didn't know what else is in the report. I mean, it just, you had to pay a lot of attention to get past that first recommendation. So I just want to take a moment to read my very, very brief summary of the rest of the recommendations. Evaluate alternatives to law enforcement response systems. Establish a pilot program for non-emergency calls. Increase data collection. Increase training. Increase accountability. Modify recruitment. Reform civil service rules. Public disclosure of data. And of course, the devil's in the details. But I believe that most people support those general goals. And I also believe that most members of law enforcement support those goals. So it's, it's not that hard for me at all to support this, this resolution and the recommendations that are here. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Mike, you raised an, an issue that certainly bears attention. We in this community pride ourselves, and you started out by saying that you certainly believe in second chances. And Mr. Rivera is definitely one of those individuals. And he started to name names and, you know, Alad, Michelle Cassau, Freddie Gray, Eric Gardner, Michael Brown, Tamir Rice, Elijah McLean, Sean Greenwood, Stefan Clark, Philando Castillo, and a host of others. But it doesn't mean that as a community, we've written off police because, you know, these folks have lost their lives at the hands of police. And so as a community, I don't think that we should be writing off citizens who have served their time for the crimes they committed as well. Martha and I had the opportunity to sit in a workshop the other day. And one of the things that resonated with me from the gentleman who was presenting is, you know, around, a whole thing around police reform. And he said, you know, we collect data and everybody's looking at data. But some of the best data that you want to get and the most informed data comes from the people who have experienced the systems of public safety at all levels. And so I believe that Mr. Rivera had a role, and a very important role in all of this. And we shouldn't just write it off. Let me amplify recommendation number seven. Just allow me to amplify that. I'm sure it's number seven. It says, develop a comprehensive community healing plan to address trauma in the relationship between residents and law enforcement. That's my last word. Thank you. Let's take this to a vote.
Mike Lane?
Yes.
Dave McKenna?
Yes.
Len Maury?
No.
Martha Robertson?
Yes.
Mike Sigler?
No.
Shawna Black?
Yes.
Amanda Champion?
Yes.
Deborah Dawson?
Yes.
Henry Granison? Henry Granison? Henry, are you there?
He's just coming back in.
I think he got kicked out. We can come back to him, Catherine.
Okay. Rich John?
Yes.
Ann Klein?
Yes.
Ann Corman?
Yes.
Henry Granison?
Yes. I got, Spectrum kicked, Spectrum went down in my area.
Leslan McBean Claiborne?
Yes.
11 ayes, 2 noes.
Thank you all very much at Carrick.
Motion to adjourn.
No, on the business, I take a motion to adjourn by Mike Lane. May I have a second, please? Steph Dawson, all in favor of adjourning. Thank you for your hard work, legislators. Everyone is. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Leslan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.